Welcome everyone to the City Council Regular Meeting. I am calling this meeting to order. The time is now 6:30 PM. Will everyone please stand and join me for the flag salute? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands in the hall. Thank you God, it is worthy of being justed for all.
Madam Clerk, may you please take roll?
Councilmember Gama.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember McQueen Lejeune.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temperez.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. Tonight's inspiration will be given by Councilmember Gama.
Thank you Mayor Martinez. Couple days ago, I went over to the teen center at the Boys and Girls Club over there at the Orvien Carpenter Community Center. And Osvaldo is organizing teens to clean up Bubbling Springs. And we were talking and I was giving him some buckets so that he could have the kids participate in taking care of Bubbling Springs. And we were talking and somehow, some way, his father came up. And he says, you know, my dad does this. And he goes, does what? He picks up trash out of Bubbling Springs Creek. I go, really? I noticed this guy over there. Anyways, bottom line is Javier Godina has been doing this for a very long time. And it really shows. And the great inspirational story, so I'm just gonna tell it real quickly. Javier Godina immigrated to the USA in 1980 at the age of 18. He lived in Colonia. He came from a town called Zacatecas. He was raised in a small ranching community. His first job in Oxnard was lemon packaging. His second job was at the mushroom farm for nearly 24 years. He bought his first home before he bought his first car in Port Winnebago at the age of 25. After the mushroom farm, 24 years there, he became a plumber and he has been working independently ever since. Currently, he lives in Winnebago and takes care of the creek behind his condo. He pulls out the trash and sometimes there's big stuff in there. And he's taken it upon himself to keep that creek nice and clean. And it helps the environment. It helps our city. But more importantly, it gives Mr. Godina a sense of pride in his living space. And so what we like to say is, just a litter bit every week. If you pick up just a litter bit of litter every week, it'll make a big difference over time. And you can see the wildlife is thriving there. And we really appreciate Mr. Godina for his efforts in keeping this creek beautiful and free of rubbish. And would like to... And here he is with his family. Interesting enough, his children are highly educated. And he has five children, three boys and two girls. All have bachelor degrees. Two went to UCLA, two went to Northridge. One to Cal State Channel Islands. The oldest is an Army Combat Veteran. And it's the American dream and it's very inspirational to all you young kids out here today, tonight. We wish you success like Mr. Godina. And Mr. Godina, if you could meet me down at the podium, I'd like to give you a certificate. I'd like to just read it real quickly and we'll get on with this meeting. Javier Godina is an inspiration to his community as he has for many years taken the responsibility of keeping Bubbling Springs Creek litter-free behind his home. He has shown all, a litter bit goes a long way with community service and adds up to a large positive impact for his community. Not only does the creek benefit, but the wildlife does as well. His efforts in removing rubbish is improving our coastal environment. I hereby recognize his efforts as an inspiration to all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Gama, for your wonderful inspiration. At this point in time, I'm gonna propose that we actually do the Sergeant Promotions presentation first, since we have quite a number of public comments. I'm making the motion that we move the Sergeant Presentation first. May we take a roll vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
I'd like to call up Police Chief Federico for our next presentation.
Thank you all. We are here tonight to acknowledge the promotions of Mike Hammerick, Baltazar Tapia, and Roki Lopez to the rank of Police Sergeant. And to honor them for their dedicated service to public safety and our community. The role of Police Sergeant is so incredibly important in any police department. But so much more important in a smaller agency like Port Winnebago PD. As shift supervisors and team unit supervisors, they are the link between the community and the police department on a daily basis. They will be your watch commanders and your detective supervisors. They're also the link between the frontline police employee and police management. They have tremendous impact on the lives and careers of officers and professional staff. As they are not only the ones who lead and hold others accountable, they are teachers and mentors to their less tenured team members. For the first time in the city's history, we get to promote three Sergeant positions at the same time. And folks, this is thanks to the cooperative efforts of the police department, city staff, your city manager, and your city council in creating an additional Police Sergeant position earlier this year. You will hear that all three of our new sergeants have extensive experience in our profession and service to our community. And when I say service to our community, I mean beyond the walls of the police station and their roles as peacekeepers. All three have been part of helping out our community in capacities such as football coaches, youth mentors, in helping out nonprofits and charities. They are all examples of your dedicated members of your Port Winnebago Police Department. Now, first one I'd like to bring up is Mike Hammerick. Sergeant Mike Hammerick started his law enforcement career in 1992 with the San Bernardino Police Department. During his 18 years with the San Bernardino Police Department, he worked the city's first Operation Safe Streets program. Multiple enforcement team, gang enforcement unit, and was a gang awareness instructor. And he was also a SWAT team operator. He eventually promoted to the rank of Corporal and Detective as a mid-level supervisor and field training officer. As a detective in San Bernardino, he worked the Specialized Crime Division in investigating crimes against children, domestic violence, and sexual assaults. He was also assigned to the homicide detail, investigating homicides, officer-involved shootings, and high-profile death investigations. Fortunately, in 2011, he lateraled to our Port Winnebago Police Department. During his time here at PHPD, he has served as a field training officer and as the Police Officers Union Board President. He was assigned to detectives for several years, working all assignments in investigations, including major crimes. Mike was promoted to Senior Officer where he was a mid-level supervisor on patrol just prior to his promotion now to Police Sergeant. Would you like to talk about the family?
Sure, sure. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, City Manager. Thank all of you for this opportunity. Thank you, Chief Federico, Command Staff, Commander Robertson, and my colleagues. Thank all of you very much. This has been a journey, 31 years to get to this level. So I truly appreciate all your sacrifices you've made for me and believing in me. I'd be remiss, though, if I don't obviously thank some very, very special people in my life. Try not to get emotional, because it's a very emotional time for me. But no, I'm not gonna... I want to thank my family first and foremost. I have some brother-in-laws here, sister-in-laws. I have some nieces and nephews here. But I have some very, very special people in my life. My three sons. Thank you, guys, for your support. Thanks for pushing Dad. I appreciate you being in my corner. My brother, who surprised me today from Oklahoma, came out here. He's a retired law enforcement officer. He came out and surprised me for this, and thank you. He's been there for a lot of these long talks, especially at night, working nights. You know, should I stay in the game? He's had a huge shoulder to lean on, so I appreciate it. And lastly, I'd be remiss if I didn't discuss and introduce my beautiful wife, Bernie. 30 years of marriage. She has sacrificed... We all know that our wives sacrificed tremendous for this career. She's been there with the sacrifices for me, her unwavering support. She's the best cut man in the business. She put me back in the fight every time. And for that, that's the reason why I'm here. So thank you, guys, very much. I love you all very much.
And as tradition, he will... His wife will do a badge pinning for his new Sergeant badge. And every officer has a watch commander, but we always say in our industry, the other watch commander is the spouse. They always have to check in with the spouse on everything they do. So... And folks, I might have mentioned it the last council meeting, but not this one. We didn't loosen our facial standards. We are growing our facial hair for November Men's Health Awareness. So we adopted the Movember movement for men's health. So this month only, December 1st, they're coming off. And then they can be mad at me for making them shave. So... Baltazar Tapia. Some of these are special for me, because you know, I started out at the department 30 years ago and then I left Santa Monica and came back. Some of these kids were here and now they're veteran police officers that are the reason I'm back, you know? So very proud. Not Mike. Mike's got more years on than me. During the past 25 years, Sergeant Tapia has climbed the ranks and was assigned to a variety of positions within the department, including our former youth program, the STAR Program, as a Coordinator. He was an Explore Advisor, Reserve Officer Coordinator, Field Training Officer, Property Crimes Detective, Major Crimes Detective, Special Problems Unit Member, and a K-9 handler. And at one point, we had multiple Canines. He was the team leader supervising a team of five K-9 handlers. Along with the above assignment, Sergeant Tapia also became a drug recognition expert and instructor, not only in Ventura County folks, but throughout the state. He has worked with the Ventura County Auto Theft Task Force, where he received state commendations for his work. He was also assigned to the Ventura County Sheriff's Narcotics Task Force. As a narcotics investigator, he participated in numerous narcotics investigations along with other experienced investigators and law enforcement personnel, including the US Marshals, the DEA, and the FBI. These investigations involve the unlawful import and distribution of controlled substances by cartel members and included laundering of narcotics proceeds. His duties include being the lead case agent, conducting surveillance, debriefing defendants, witnesses, and recruiting and directing informants and obtaining and executing search warrants. After the task force, Sergeant Tapia returned to the Port Winnebago Police Department, where he began assisting with major crimes investigations as the Major Crimes Detective. And he was also, prior to his promotion, the interim Detective Sergeant as he mentored our newer detectives. Congratulations, Balti. Want me to say a few words and talk about the family?
First and foremost, Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you. Everyone here. I know it's not just me, it's the other two sergeants that got promoted. But I truly just want to say that I'm homegrown. Born in Oxnard, went to Winnebago High School. This is the career that I wanted to do since my senior year in high school, when I met Chief Estrella. Chief Federico now. We met when he was an officer. He is now my seventh chief. I've been here. I know the culture. I give my all to this city. And I couldn't do that without the support of my family, which has always been there, has been like my rock. My wife Susan and my kids. Thank you so much. I can't say anymore than that, because I try to show them, not just tell them. So again, thank you. And I appreciate the recognition and the promotion.
Roki Lopez. Also, I sat on the oral board with Ron Burns on his first hire into the city over 20 years ago. Again, like just that I'm back here and now he's one of my veteran officers is incredible. In 2002, Roki Lopez began his career as a Reserve Police Officer for the Port Winnebago Police Department. 2003, he was hired as a full-time police officer and subsequently promoted to Senior Officer. During his 20-year career, he has been assigned as a patrol officer and a K-9 police officer. And he was assigned in the Special Problems Unit as an investigator with his K-9. He's been a drug recognition expert, field training officer, arrest and control instructor, TASER instructor, pepperball instructor, firearms and range master, and prior to this position, a senior police officer. But in one of the last assignments as a senior officer, he was entrusted in the role of Acting Sergeant, which he successfully filled just prior to this appointment due to our shortage of sergeants. Now, he is a permanent Police Sergeant. Congratulations.
Thank you. I want to thank Council, the opportunity, Chief, Commander, my colleagues. I have had really good mentors over a 20-year career here, some of which are still working here. Sergeant Tapia is one of them. Sergeant Perez has helped guide me, dragged me sometimes to help find the way. I am in a unique opportunity here at the Police Department. My father was working here in the 80s as a Reserve Officer. He got out of the business, per se, for a while. And he recommended I work here, because he enjoyed it so much. So I applied, and I've been here ever since. And when I got off training, I started being able to take on ride-alongs. My dad wanted to come on a ride-along with me. And so he ended up watching me get in a foot pursuit and it sparked bug to come back, and he did. And I'm working with him now here at the Police Department. So I'm appreciative of my father, because I get to work with him, because he's guided me through life and my career. And it's been amazing. So I'm appreciative for that. My family. My wife. Sorry. She's my backbone. My kids. I have five kids, blended family. I want to thank them. 20 years here, I try to put my best foot forward. And sometimes that means that you miss birthdays, you miss holidays. And without the support of your family, you can't do those things. So I'm... My wife, Grace. I love her. I don't know how, but she's stuck with me. And I'm very appreciative of it. It helped me tremendously, my kids, for all the times that I wasn't there and I should have been. Thank you very much.
And it's not necessarily that their years of experience can help them accomplish anything on this job. Sometimes it's because they've had five kids and so they can handle anything. So it's pretty amazing. Thank you all. I appreciate you, appreciate this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Federico. Would Council like to say some words?
I know we have a lot to do this evening. I did want to just congratulate Sergeants Hammerick, Tapia, and Lopez. It's really nice to see that these individuals have come up through the Port Winnebago Police Department and have accomplished a goal to make it to Sergeant. So looking forward to just seeing you all on the streets, mentoring the other officers. And I hope this is gonna help some of you decide to stay just a little longer.
Thank you all for serving our community so well. We look forward to seeing you out there in the streets. Look forward to many more years of a safe community. And congratulations to all.
I'd also like to offer my congratulations to our three new sergeants. I was doing the numbers up here and it's almost 80 years of combined experience that you bring to your new positions. And I took the opportunity this weekend to watch the November 6th meeting of the special meeting at Santa Paula's City Council, where they are losing their officers to the Sheriff's Department and to other agencies. And I'm just glad that we have the budget and we have the ability to provide promotability here for our police officers and to pay them the wages that they deserve. So thank you very much for your service. Really appreciate it.
So Sergeant Tapia, Hammerick, and Roki, you three are some of my favorite people. I've gotten to know you from my husband. So I've watched how you are as police officers, as family men, as people. And you're the next generation of command staff for this agency. And I think looking at you and knowing who you are as people, we're in good hands. And I'm glad to see you all promoting. It's definitely something that was well-deserved. So stay safe out there and take care. And I thank the families for their sacrifice, because we know it's hard and it's trying. And you three, including my own, can be difficult. But that's the best parts of you. So thank you for your service to our community. Thank you for your dedication and take care.
And I will just echo what the Council has said. Congratulations to our new sergeants. Thank you. And I hope it was okay with the public that we decided to do the presentation first, especially because we have a lot of public comments and I know a lot of people leave right after the public comments. So I think this was actually good for some of the youth that's gonna come up and say some public comments to have seen the presentation. I do also want to mention, seeing as we have over 20, some public comments, we're gonna limit to three minutes. The process will be the same pertaining to each agenda item. Madam Clerk, can you decide who's gonna come up first?
Sure, Mayor. I just wanted to confirm the time limit.
Two minutes?
Two minutes, okay. Oh, sorry, Kendi Bonos.
Dear Councilmembers, good afternoon. My name is Kendi Bonos and I am the Communication Director of Port Winnebago Future Leaders of America Master Achievers, FLAMA Student Council. I am here today to ask you to take action on a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy for the city of Port Winnebago. Smoking is linked to an increased risk of age-related muscular degeneration, AMD, which is a leading cause of vision loss in older adults. I am concerned about the harm the most vulnerable in our community face against second- and third-hand smoke. Taking action on a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy is not just a step forward on a healthier living environment, but a commitment to the health of all residents. Let us unite in this shared vision and please take action on the smoke-free environment that enhances the well-being of each community member living in multi-unit housing. Thank you.
I'd actually would like to invite the entire group to come on up. Maybe you guys might feel a little stronger, united. And... And our next speaker?
And I'm going to do the timer on my phone for... It's not allowing me to do it on here. So if you start to go over, I'll just let you know. I'm gonna do the timer on my phone. So we have Javier Garnica?
Yes. Go ahead. Hello, Councilmembers. My name is Javier Garnica. I am the Port Winnebago Youth Organization with Future Leaders of America. I am here to express my concern about the dangers of second- and third-hand smoke in our city and its impacts on the health of our community, especially to those who live in multi-unit housing. People living in multi-unit housing run a higher risk of developing diseases from second- and third-hand smoke, which we know can cause cancer and other lung and respiratory problems. I think that we can all agree that the home should be a place where families can be safe and not in danger of developing diseases and other health problems. Youth need to be in a healthy environment, not just at school, but also in their homes. It's crucial to their overall growth and development for them to be in a space that is free from threats to the health and safety. According to the U.S. Census, 60% of Port Huaynimi's population is Hispanic or Latino. Latinos are one of the populations that are disproportionately affected by second- and third-hand smoke. Big tobacco companies purposely target black and brown communities as they see us as easy targets. These companies don't care about our health or our well-being. They only care about turning a profit at the expense of our communities. And I understand that there's more work to do, not just educating and informing our own community on the dangers of tobacco, but also in supporting those who do smoke by helping them find healthier ways of coping. Our youth have worked extensively to make a positive change in their community by collecting petition signatures, hosting forums, and even meeting with some of you. I hope that you can, I hope that you take into consideration the words and the hard work of our youth by doing what is best for the health and development of our community members. It is time for the city of Port Huaynimi to put the health of its community members first. I urge you to act in the best interest of our residents by taking action on a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy to ensure our community is smoke-free. We would like for this topic to be added to the agenda for the upcoming city council meeting. And I left all of you with some resources, including a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy ordinance that may guide you into the right direction. Thank you.
It's going to be Adelie Garcia, and then Estrella Garcia after.
My name is Adelie Garcia. I am the president of the Future Leaders of America Student Council for Port Huaynimi Region. I am here to express my support for a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy. I believe that this is a big issue affecting not only folks living in a multi-unit housing, but all residents. Studies have shown that second-hand smoke has killed over 50,000, that has caused 50,000 deaths annually just in the United States alone. Not only does this affect humans, but also our dogs and any of their pets. And I know a lot of you guys have pets, so it hits my heart personally. Many residents have shown concerns for their pets because it has proven that dogs are at a higher risk of tumors and chronic coughing. This is an issue that goes further than just humans. It also affects innocent animals. We, as a community, need to band together and do what is right for our health and everyone else's. Future Leaders of America has done a lot of work educating the community through hosting forums, meeting with city council members, doing photo voices, and collecting signatures. Over the past few months, we have been working hard to collect signatures of support and have met our goal. We have collected over 1,000 signatures from community members who support the smoke-free multi-unit housing policy. I leave with you today a copy of all the signatures collected as proof that our community is in support of our policy.
Estrella?
Good evening, council members. My name is Estrella Garcia. I am here on behalf of Future Leaders of America, and I am here presenting youth in the Port Huaynimi region. I am here today to voice our concerns on the issue of smoking in multi-unit households. It's incredible to see the amount of young people consuming tobacco products these days, teens who see these drugs as their new toys in today's generation. In 2023, 10% of middle and high school students, that is 2.80 million students, reported current use of any tobacco product. Teens who use these products range from the ages as young as 11 years old. It is hard to believe that these young souls are becoming addicted to such dangerous products. Unfortunately, the fact of the matter is that tobacco companies have made it easier for you to purchase their products, including electronic tobacco vape devices. Council members, please think about the young people in our families, in your families, your loved ones, and all the youth in our city that you represent. I am sure that your youth have come across these drugs once. You all may have the right to believe that it's one's responsibility to be aware of the issue. But given that these tobacco companies come up with tactical ways to advertise and entice the young generations, it becomes difficult for parents to keep their children safe from this dangerous drug. "We don't smoke that. We just sell it." "We just reserve the right to smoke for the young, the poor, the black, and the stupid," said RJ Reynolds, a businessman in charge of the tobacco companies. "It is time to stop ignoring tobacco companies from targeting our communities." "It is not fair for smokers, non-smokers, children, and pets being exposed to second- and third-hand smoke while living in multi-unit housing." "Second- and third-hand smoke can travel into air vents, airways, and walls, thus exposing non-smokers to its harmful effects." "It is necessary to take this issue seriously to secure a safe future for all generations in the city of Port Huaynimi." "I urge you to please take action on the smoke-free multi-unit housing policy. Thank you."
Juan Vega, then Jessalyn Banos.
Everybody, hello, council. My name is Ivan Vega, and I work with Future Leaders of America as Policy and Health Equity Manager. I'm here today to express my concern about second- and third-hand smoke in our city. In Port Huaynimi, we pride ourselves in our development and revitalization efforts. Yet, we ignore the health and safety of our residents living in apartments and condominiums where families were affected by second-hand smoke. There is no safe amount of second-hand smoke exposure. The home is the main place where many children and adults breathe second-hand smoke. More than one in three smokers who live in the rental housing are exposed to second-hand smoke. I myself live in an apartment, and my neighbor's garage is right under my apartment. Every afternoon, my neighbor and his friends smoke in his garage. No one in my family smokes. However, in my family and I smell the smoke seeping through the walls every afternoon. According to the CDC, second-hand smoke kills 48,000 smokers per year. Tobacco disproportionately impacts Latinx communities. Given that 41.9% of Californians' multi-unit housing residents are Latinx, many of whom are exposed daily to drifting second-hand smoke. I worry for my family's health and the others who cannot afford to move to places with cleaner air. Every person living in multi-unit housing deserves to breathe smoke-free air. Please act in our residents' best interests by taking action on a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy to ensure our community remains smoke-free. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jessalyn Banos. I hope you guys are good. I'm here to ask you guys to please consider the smoke-free policy for multi-unit housing. I am here with Future Leaders of America. I am the secretary for the FLA FLAMAs. I am here to let you guys know that I know many people might not like to be controlled in what they would do in their homes. I wouldn't like it either. However, this is for a good cause. My parents own a business, and they are located next to two smoke shops. Here, daily, many people come in and smoke. I am daily exposed to this, and I know my fate eventually because of this contamination. Many students avoid these substances because they don't want to fall into these steps of using substances. And many want to go far in life, or maybe addiction runs in the family, and they want to end the cycle. However, it is most difficult for people living in multi-unit housings to avoid exposure in second- or third-hand smoke because smoke travels through vents, doorways, or even goes through walls. One's duty as a city council is to help improve the city. And if this multi-unit housing smoke-free policy is passed, you'll be helping the city and its residents. To improve the quality of life for now and in the future, we need this policy to be passed. Eventually, this will help the smokers' lives in one way or another. I urge you to please take action for this policy and help others improve lives. Thank you.
Megan Salas, and then Odette Moran.
Hello, council. My name is Megan Salas, and I'm the Oxnard Youth Organizer with Future Leaders of America. I just want to echo what my students have already mentioned, that today I'm here to express my concern regarding second-hand smoke. So Port Huaynimi does take pride in the quality of life. On their website, you guys highlight that its clean air is a benefit to its residents. Yet, this overlooks the health and safety of its residents living within apartments and condos by ignoring the effects caused by second-hand smoke. So as already mentioned, we do quote CDC because they have various data that, you know, we think is very important. So I'm only going to cover some of it. More than one in three non-smokers who live in rental housing are exposed to second-hand smoke. I am this one in three statistic. I'm not a smoker, but I live in an apartment. And because of that, I am unwillingly exposed to second-hand smoke that travels between apartments. Opening windows and trying other methods of ventilation does very little to stop the effects as I'm already inhaling this unclean air. So I believe that an avoidance to this should be a human right, just as housing should be a human right, especially in the place that I do call home. The CDC also states additionally, one in three multi-unit housing residents are currently covered by smoke-free building policies. I'm currently not in that statistics, and I ask why. Because there's other cities, like Moore Park, that have already passed laws to ban the smoking in private units of residential multi-unit housing properties to protect the residents. Other cities have made this a priority, and I believe that so should Port Huaynimi. So please act in the best interest of the community by taking action on a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy to ensure that our community can remain smoke-free. Thank you.
Odette Moran?
Hello, buenas tardes. My name is Odette Moran, and I'm here with CAWS in support of FLA's smoke-free multi-unit housing policy. These last few years, I have been learning more and more about the truth of South Oxnard and Port Huaynimi's air quality, the many industries that also are neighbors of this space. And I am truly disgusted by the amount of things that cause cancer and cut short the lives of our communities here. Our communities already involuntarily breathe in toxins like ammonia, diesel exhaust, nitrogen oxides, and more. And as many have stated before me, second-hand smoke kills 41,000 non-smokers a year. And more than one in three smokers or non-smokers live in rental housing are exposed to it. The fight for clean air is long, but the city of Port Huaynimi can take action for its residents sooner, which is why I'm here to ask you to choose clean air for Port Huaynimi residents who live in multi-unit housing and support FLA's smoke-free policy. Please add it to your agenda. Thank you so much.
Ernesto Carrillo, and then Ariel Zamora.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ernesto Carrillo, and I am an intern at Future Leaders of America. I'm here today to express my concerns about second- and third-hand smoke in our city. Second-hand and third-hand smoke is something that has no safe level, meaning that even with a brief exposure, you can still result in serious health problems. Even using any form of ventilation can prevent exposure to second- and third-hand smoke because the smoke can still travel through ventilations and cling to walls and furniture. This makes it extremely dangerous for people who have elderly family members and children if they are exposed and can cause long-term health effects. Some of these effects can go from respiratory problems to more serious ones like lung cancer, heart disease, and starting infant X syndrome. Did you know that two out of every five children are exposed to second-hand smoke? Do we really want our future generation of youth to be exposed to the deadly effects of second- and third-hand smoke? With this being said, I ask you to please value the health of all residents and take action for a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy to ensure our community remains smoke-free. Thank you very much.
Hola, miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Ariel Zamora, y estoy aquí para expresar mi apoyo a la campaña de viviendas colectivas libres de humo de futuros días de América. A través de FLA, he aprendido sobre los riesgos de fumar y estar expuestos al humo de segunda y tercera mano. Sé que una ley de viviendas colectivas libres de humo les beneficiaría a muchos, ya que los que residen en viviendas colectivas corren mayor riesgo de estar expuestos al humo de segunda y tercera mano, en especial los niños que muchas veces juegan afuera. Tener contacto con estas sustancias o estar expuestos puede provocar dificultades en el crecimiento de su desarrollo físico y mental. Un amigo vivía en apartamentos, tuvo contactos con el tabaco y comenzó a ser consumidor. Con el tiempo empezó a tener dificultades para respirar y pérdida de cabello. Le he aconsejado bien y le he dicho que lo que está haciendo le está haciendo daño y le podría causar hasta la muerte. Con suerte, él ha dejado de dejar de fumar y he visto varios cambios positivos, de los cuales yo estoy muy orgulloso. Espero que nadie más le pase lo que pasó con mi amigo. Así que quiero reunir de suficiente apoyo para protestar contra el tabaco para que esta sustancia no afecte a nuestra comunidad. Muchas gracias.
Gerardo, and then Guillermo Jovell Velasco?
Buenas tardes, queridos miembros del Consejo Ciudadano. Mi nombre es Gerardo Daniel Jovell Velasco, y hoy vengo aquí a hacer mi protesta en contra del humo del tabaco comercial. Mi amigo ha sido víctima de este terrible perjuicio del mundo. Cuando lo conocí, no fumaba. Fue año y medio después de que lo conocí que él comenzó a fumar. Tomó tanta dependencia del tabaco que se le hizo difícil dejarlo. Él fumaba alrededor de dos cajetieres diarias, y desafortunadamente generó un cáncer de pulmón terminal. Estuvo alrededor de un año luchando contra el cáncer. Logró estabilizarse, pero fue tanta la gravedad del daño en sus pulmones que hace unos años falleció. Esto nos deja como enseñanza que no hay que mezclarse con este mal hábito, que no solamente afecta a los que fuman, sino también afecta a los niños y personas de la tercera edad, incluso al mismo medio ambiente. Yo siempre que ustedes, eh, yo quiero que ustedes, consejo, tomen algunas cartas en el asunto y pongan algún tipo de restricción en algunos lugares de viviendas unidas múltiples. Usando mi historia como testimonio para evitar poner en riesgo a los que no fuman, que esta acción sea un paso a evitar que más personas sigan el consumo del tabaco. Gracias.
Hola, muy buenas tardes, queridos miembros del Consejo. Mi nombre es Guillermo Jovell Velasco, y hoy estoy aquí para expresar mi descontento con los efectos de humo de segunda y tercera mano. Mis amigos han expresado su descontento con el olor que se siente en los apartamentos. Uno de ellos me comentó que es insoportable el olor que había en su apartamento. Por esta razón, les pido que implementen una ley que proteja a las personas que viven en los apartamentos, ya que ellos corren mayor riesgo de desarrollar una enfermedad gracias al humo de segunda y tercera mano. Según muchos estudios, es malo estar constantemente expuesto al humo del tabaco porque nos puede proporcionar enfermedades tales como bronquitis crónica, emfisma, pulmonar, y cáncer de pulmón. Esto no solo afecta a los que fuman, sino también a los niños, jóvenes, adultos, y personas de la tercera edad, especialmente a las personas que están expuestas al humo de segunda y tercera mano, privándolos de tener una vida tranquila, gratificante, y plena por culpa de este cáncer llamado tabaco. Y por eso les pido, por favor, que tomen manos a la obra e implementen una ley de viviendas colectivas libres de humo. Muchas gracias.
Hayden Stiles, and then Montserrat Sanchez?
Good evening, council members. My name is Hayden Stiles, and I am a student at Huaynimi High School and the treasurer for the Port Huaynimi FLAMA Council. I stand before you today to urge you to consider and enact a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy for the city of Port Huaynimi. This is an issue that affects not only our community's health, but also the well-being and quality of life for many of its residents. Children, the elderly, and those with pre-existing health conditions are especially vulnerable because they have little control over their exposure to this harmful substance, and this is something we must address. According to the CDC, there is no safe level of exposure to second-hand smoke. It contains over 7,000 chemicals, hundreds of which are toxic, and about 70 of which can cause cancer. Smoking in multi-unit housing structures is not just an inconvenience. It's a severe public health issue. I have an elderly grandmother who lives in a multi-unit housing complex in Port Huaynimi. She has been a non-smoker her entire life, but her health has been compromised due to her exposure to second-hand smoke. Despite her repeated complaints to the building management... Despite her repeated complaints to the building management, the issue remains unaddressed. She, like many in our city, is forced to endure this health hazard within the supposed safety of her own home. My grandmother's story is not unique, but it highlights the urgency of passing a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy. Enacting this law will have a positive impact on the overall image and desirability of our city. Smoke-free housing is a growing trend in communities across the country, and it sends a clear message that we value the health and well-being of our residents. This policy can attract new families to our city and increase the overall quality of lives for our existing residents. In conclusion, I implore the ci, the council to consider the well-being of our community, our families, and our neighbors, and take action on a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy. Thank you for your attention and your dedication to making our city a better place to live.
Good evening, Port Huinimi City Council and Port Huinimi residents. My name is Montserrat Sanchez and I am the Oxnard Secretary for our FLA programs. In March of last year, we were forced to move into a small apartment in Surfside here in Huinimi. In this apartment complex, you are not allowed to attend board meetings unless you are the owner of this house. As many of you know, Latinos are not capable of always purchasing their own home. In this way, many of us are not able to voice our concerns. Five months later, in August, my dad suffered three deathly heart attacks over a weekend and had to undergo three emergency bypass surgeries. Without these bypass surgeries, my father would have passed away when I was only fifteen. He spent about a month in the hospital before they let him come home to recover. When we got home, we discovered that our dear neighbor Stuart was a heavy smoker. He would constantly smoke inside of his apartment, around the complex, and on the balcony, which was directly next to ours. During this time, there was a major heat wave where we had to keep our doors open at all times, or else it would simply be too hot. Additionally, we would have to close them because the smoke was affecting my dad's lungs and making his condition even worse. Later on, the doctors told us that the constant smoke every day was delaying his recovery significantly, and if he, and if our neighbor did not stop exposing us to this smoke, his lungs would not recover and he could pass away. After this, we had to constantly ask our neighbor to stop smoking due to my dad's extremely sensitive lungs being affected by the second and third-hand smoke. On December twenty-fourth, the day before Christmas of last year, our neighbor Stuart was found dead in his apartment at the age of twenty-seven due to lung failure. Their paramedics eventually told us that it was due to black lung. Eventually, we found out that using smoking, that he was using smoking as a coping method to deal with his mother's passing a month earlier. If the city of Port Huinimi had passed the multi-unit housing smoking ban before this, my father could have recovered a lot easier and a lot faster, and my neighbor Stuart could still be, could still be here alive with us today. Thank you.
Julian Salis, Daniel Gonzalez, and Maria Navarro.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jolene Salis and I currently attend Oxnard High School. I grew up with a mother who smoked daily. And as a result of this, I often experience issues relating to my respiratory system and I have panic attacks when I smell smoke. I am fortunate enough to say that while my mother still smokes, she's mindful enough to do so away from me. However, a problem still stands. My little brother can be at risk. I like to think that he's the one who's motivated my mother to be mindful about where and when she smokes. We have been through so much together and I love him more than life itself. We actually celebrated his sixth birthday today. We live together in the MUH, or Multi-Unit Housing Structure, and I appreciate every moment I have with him. A few months ago, we had neighbors move in, and now more than three times a week, the smell of smoke flows through my bedroom when I try to sleep. I know if I can smell it, so can my little brother. I volunteer to come here and speak because I wouldn't be able to call myself a good big sister if I didn't prevent him from suffering the same problems that I do. For these reasons, I urge you to take action as a comprehensive smoke-free multi-unit housing policy for the safety of not just my brother and I, but for all Port Huinimi residents. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon or good evening, city council members. My name is Daniel Gonzalez. I am the organizing director with Future Leaders of America. I'm here today to urge city council to put a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy ordinance topic on the next agenda to ensure our community is safe from the harmful effects of second and third-hand smoke. Our youth have worked hard these past two years to inform and educate our neighborhood on the importance of this issue by hosting community forums and speaking with elected officials. As mentioned in other comments, there is no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke, and an estimated two out of every five children, including seven out of ten African-American children, are exposed to secondhand smoke in the United States. Smoke-free multi-unit housing or housing ordinance aren't only beneficial to our community members' health, but also to property owners. Nationally, fires caused by cigarette smoking result in over three hundred million in property loss each year. As of January first of two thousand twenty-three, seventy-seven municipalities, including neighboring areas such as Moore Park, Morro Bay, and Guadalupe, have committed to protecting their residents by enacting smoke-free policies that prohibit smoking in a hundred percent private units of rental multi-unit housing properties. Please act in the best interest of our residents by putting a smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinance topic on the next agenda to ensure our community has the opportunity to speak on the issue and share their concerns. If you have any questions or need any further information, feel free to contact me directly. You should find my business or my card, my work card, in your, in the folders that we passed out earlier. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. Hello, council, Mayor Martinez, and everyone here. My name is Maria Navarro and I am a senior policy advocate at CAUSS. Today, I am here to just be in support of FLA and the group of young people who we have here today who are asking you to put this item on the agenda. I am also a proud resident of Port Huinimi, have been a Port Huinimi resident for more than ten years. Now live in Surfside Three, which I have to say has a lot of smoking in the, in the units themselves, right? Like there, every day I wake up, I find one or two neighbors smoking. You could see the little butts of smoke everywhere. And it is difficult when you're put with the, with not only the smoke, but also all the polluting industries that are around us. I think that it creates a environment where we really have to close our windows. For example, I live right next to the water facility, water cleansing facility. Sometimes that smell gets filtered in with the smell of the smoke, smell with everything. And it's, it, it does hurt us. It hurts our health. It hurts our well-being, especially for folks who are children, are developing, the elderly, the disabled. I think this is a really, really good proposal that FLA is presenting you, and I hope that you ought to consider it. I want to say that also to highlight, I noticed that there were three commenters who came up here and there's no real Spanish interpretation, and that's something that maybe you could look into. Like, I don't know if that is something that could be provided by the city at some point, so thank you.
That concludes all your public comments, so thank you for joining us. Karina Cortez. And again, I'm just going to be doing the two-minute timer on my phone. Okay.
Good evening, council. My name is Karina Cortez. I am a junior at Oxnard Middle College High School and a South Oxnard resident. I am also the on-site coordinator for Swami Justice and the co-director of Swami Justice Youth and Family Civic League. At Swami Justice, my job is to make sure the event's going accordingly and make sure that everyone's seen at an, at a according manner and making sure that everyone's on task. Thanks to Swami Justice, I've had amazing opportunities like being able to intern at the Public Defender's Office this past summer and even starting my own project, which is the Swami Justice Youth and Family Civic League, and being the youngest Social Justice Fund Fellow. With the Social Justice Fund, we plan on making new generation citizens and teaching them the mechanics of voting and making voting a generational habit. I am very grateful to be part of Swami Justice where I can give back to the community that has given me so much. Thank you.
Angel Salinas and then Vanessa Frank.
Good evening, council. My name is Angel Salinas and I am a student at Oxnard Middle College High School and I'm currently on my third year. I joined Oxnard, I joined Swami Justice last year and I've been with it ever since. My, my, my experience as a volunteer has been great. Ever since I joined, I've been exposed to new opportunities, not just with school, but also socially. As a volunteer, I work on the paperwork for new generation citizens that we could help with. So they come to us, we fill out the paperwork with no cost. So we just try our best to bring back, to bring our services to our community. And even though I'm just a volunteer, I believe that multiple of us have done great work at Swami Justice, not just me, but the others that attend as well, the others that attend as well every month. And I just want to show that Swami Justice is not only good for students, but also for the community that it serves. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thanks for taking a moment to listen to us. My name is Vanessa Frank. I'm an immigration attorney and my office is based in Ventura, but I'm one of the co-founders of Swap Meet Justice. And I'm very proud to be here with some of our amazing leaders. And we came tonight just to share with you that this is an event that happens at Oxnard College on the last Sunday of every month, unless the last Sunday happens to be Thanksgiving weekend, in which case we do it the weekend before. So we just came fresh off yesterday. We were at the Oxnard College Swap Meet where we prepared, I think, something about ten citizenship applications for new families. We have the Public Defender's Office there doing record expungement. We've got the child support, child support, Office of Child Support there, helping people understand what their rights and obligations are there. We have a variety of attorneys available. Everything is free. We've got about twenty county agencies involved. We have a booth where elected officials are invited every month to come and share the work that you do at the swap meet, so that we hope that, as Karina was saying, we hope that people will get more involved in the community and be more informed. And so we do extend an invitation to you to come out and explain a little bit about what the difference is between the city council and the Board of Supervisors and the state legislature and the federal government, so that people can get in the habit of being able to speak out for their rights and get, and push policy forward. So we're really grateful for this opportunity to share about this event, and we really welcome you anytime. And want you to remember, the next one will be January twenty-eighth. We're also taking December off. But January twenty-eighth, we'll be back, raring to go for the new year, and we'll be there on the last Sunday of every month throughout twenty twenty-four. At, all day, all day, we are there. You, we recommend people to come at eight-thirty in the morning to get help, and we're there till three. Volunteers get a lot of goodies, but, but we hope to provide service and we hope to always be, including new volunteers, new people to be informed. Thank you very much.
Monica Salinas and then Camilo Garcia.
Hello, good evening, council members. My name is Monica Salinas. I am attending CSUCI nearby here. And I just really want to share information about Swap Meet Justice. Swap Meet Justice, I've joined recently, two years, three years, and I feel like I've loved it since forever. It's the best thing that could happen to me and I guess even some family members that I know around here. Swap Meet Justice provides different resources to everybody in the community of Ventura County and to even other counties as well. So we even had people from Port Huinimi ask us, why haven't we been to Port Huinimi yet, right? So due to that, and a lot of other cities coming and telling us, why have we been in their city, we've actually tried to provide transport to them to come in Oxnard College to get all these reservices. And just to give you a little bit more and say what we do is that we provide medical support in order for people who can't get it due to the help with Swam, with Westminster. Additionally, we have legal services that can be done with credit, immigration, and other as well as farmers and workers' rights. Swap Meet Justice is an amazing thing that can also be, and is supported by volunteers. Volunteers not only learn how to get kind of like customer service, we say customer service, but how to talk to people within their own community, how to know what they suffered, what they do, and what also, like, what is it like to live in the community. So here I am asking you if you will help us support and also share the word about Swap Meet Justice in order to, for us to help more volunteers, more teenagers, and also to help a lot more of our community members. Thank you.
Hello, council members. My name is Camilo Garcia. I'm a senior at Oxnard Middle College and also a Port Huinimi local. I wanted to, you know, help out and let you guys know about this amazing opportunity that's presented every last Sunday of the month. Swami Justice is a fair that is compiled of countless organizations and institutions of social, social organizations such as CLUE. The Westminster Free Clinic also comes out, and as Vanessa mentioned, government agencies from Ventura County. Swami Justice invites volunteers such as myself and other youth volunteers from Huinimi High School, Oxnard Middle College, OHS, and as far as Santa Paula to come and learn how to fill out citizenship applications, how to renew and apply for green cards, and how to renew DACA for people who might not know how to do it themselves. The organization, I mean, I think the organization is great because it helps people who are willing to help out the community, you know, give back. I started doing it because I wanted to give back to the community because my grandparents were immigrants and I figured if I can make some people's lives easier and, you know, start that process of getting people citizenship and then enabling their children to vote, I figure that's, I mean, that's the least I can do. So this organization has shown me what I want to do. I had the opportunity, I had the opportunity to intern at the Ventura County Public Defender's Office and Vanessa Frank's office, and I learned that I want to do public service. So God willing, I'll be able to come back here to Port Huinimi when I'm done with my four-year education and, you know, help serve the local community. You know, maybe one day I'll be sitting up there and helping, you know, get things done, but, um, yeah. So I invite all of you guys to come out on January twenty-eighth during our next Swap Meet Justice meeting, because we always have local politicians coming out, like the supervisor, Supervisor Lopez, and Supervisor Long. So if you guys would like to come out, I mean, feel free. It's always good to see new faces and, you know, it's, it's great. So thank you for your time.
And then we just have two written public comments. Dear council members, especially with rent so high and rising and so few vacancies to enable people to move, it is cruel to subject apartment residents to their neighbor's secondhand smoke. The smoke drifts throughout a building. There is no escape. If a man's home is his castle, are these families not entitled to the safety and sanctity of their home? Please take a strong leadership role and require no smoking in apartments and multi-unit dwellings. Smokers are very used to taking it outside at this point and you're doing the landlords a favor. Two, few, fewer complaints, less damage to property. Thank you. None.
Dear city council, my name is Mark F. McLernan, a longtime area resident. I admit I was disappointed that at the last city council meeting, the council did not look to solicit proposals for a new city attorney, but instead they renewed the contract with Mr. Spalding's law firm. After reading the current agenda, I found more to be dismayed by. Item number seven is asking that over one point one million dollars be refunded to cannabis business. Who is responsible for this mistake? Should not Mr. Spalding have been on top of any agreements and collections procedures along with the previous city manager? This speaks to incompetence or at the very least, lack of proper attention. Now the city faces even greater budget issues added to by this blunder. Additionally, item number five is a request for additional funds for an investigative law firm. I assume this was needed in addition to past expenses because of investigations that may have involved the actions of the past city manager while Mr. Spalding was providing legal advice. It is my understanding that both the city attorney and city manager are at will. In light of the over one point one million dollar mistake that the city must now refund, all under the legal watch of Mr. Spalding, possibly the council should reconsider the contract extension and consider more competent legal services that have the city at heart rather than what could be perceived as personal agendas. Thanks for your time and efforts for our home. Respectfully, Mark F. McLernan. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're now going to move on to the agenda approval for the city council. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved? Second.
Madam Clerk, can we please take a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Do any members of council have any conflicts of interest to disclose? Hearing none. We're gonna consider items on the consent calendar, which will be enacted in one motion unless a council member has a request to remove an item for discussion. May I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Calendar? Calendar, second. Uh, may we have a vote?
Sorry, all in favor? All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Approve the consent calendar. We're gonna move on to item number six, uh, business item, approval of general fund capital reserve policy. Will staff please present the report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have a brief presentation on this item. The item is um, recommending that uh, we uh, as a city um, create a capital reserve policy and a capital reserve fund. And so um, I'll briefly go through that item. I wanted to start with um, for two reasons, uh, sort of uh, just an explanation and a recap of um, last year's budget and then the uh, this year's budget and next year's budget. Uh, we're on a two-year budget cycle, so earlier this year we adopted the um, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget and the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Um, and so, uh, and we just closed out the twenty-two, twenty-three uh, budget um, a couple of months ago, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So we wanted to sort of recap that and um, the reason we'll be doing so uh, relates to the Capital Improvement Project Fund and budgets. And so I'll, I'll highlight those. But um, it's just sort of a reminder, uh, last year's budget. Um, we had um, as illustrated here, we had a uh, general fund, uh, but um, sorry, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. We had a general fund revenue uh, in our adopted budget of twenty-five point nine million dollars. General fund expenses of twenty-six point eight million dollars. And then we had originally planned to do three point seven million dollars in CIP projects. And uh, the, the, this year and next year, the budgets that were included in our adopted budget, we had general fund revenue uh, for this year of twenty-six point nine million, uh, against expenses of twenty-six point five million. And then, but we were also planning to do three million dollars in CIP projects. And for next year's budget, uh, the year that starts July first, um, we had twenty-seven point two million dollars in revenue against twenty-six point eight million dollars in expenses. Uh, but we're still planning to do another one point four million dollars in CIP projects. And so the reason we wanted to explain this is because um, one of the things we're looking at doing and you can see, sort of illustrated here, is trying to have mo- a more consistent, regular capital improvement project budget. Um, you can see here that in one year we had a three point seven million dollar CIP budget. And then two years ahead, almost, well, less than half of that, a one point four million dollar budget. And um, uh, we, as part of the CIP reserve policy, we wanna create and fund a consistent um, uh, level. Um, and one of the goals will be, it'll create a CIP reserve fund and it won't um, it'll kind of smooth that portion of the budget out where we don't have these years where we have a huge CIP budget that's impacting our, our um, uh, general fund budget. And so, uh, and I'll show why that's important on the next slide. On the next slide, um, so we just had talked about, going back, our adopted budgets. And so that's the plan that we adopt for each of those years. But if you actually look at the end of um, the June twenty-two to twenty-three budget, uh, and that says unaudited twenty-three, twenty-four, that's actually a mistake. It should be unaudited twenty-two, twenty-three financials. We're comparing the adopted budget, the plan versus what actually happened, the um, the numbers at the end of the year. And uh, when you look at those, uh, when you put them next to each other, you can see that um, the biggest difference between what we planned to do and what we did do is the CIP, the capital improvement projects. We had planned to do last year, three point seven million dollars in CIP projects. We only completed four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in CIP projects. Again, why is that important to this conversation? There's, there's two reasons. One is because just because we didn't complete those projects doesn't mean we don't need to still do that, the, that work in those projects. So we need to make sure that the funding for those projects re- remains available and doesn't get spent on other items. Uh, the example I give, and I'll allude to a couple of times throughout this presentation, is if you need to fix the roof on your house and you save up and then you decide you wanna buy a new car, that, uh, just because you spent the money doesn't mean you don't need to fix the roof still. And you still need to figure out how to have the money to fix the roof. So for us, one of the things we're trying to do with the CIP fund is when we identify a project and we fund it, we actually keep it in a separate fund where um, it will be there for that project and it won't um, kind of be mixed in with everything else and then potentially spent. And then, next thing we know, we thought we had money for a project and it turns out we didn't. So that's sort of what we're trying to do. So you could see last year, we'd planned to do three point seven million dollars. We only did four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And so, um, that means there's three point three million dollars in projects out there still, but it doesn't mean that we necessarily have three point three million dollars to do those projects unless we're making sure we protect that funding. The second point we wanted to show with this chart, which is some good news mentioned in the uh, staff report for this item, is that although we initially expected a deficit and partially because of planning to do all those projects, we actually have uh, estimate that we ended the year with a one point three million dollar surplus from last year. And so that is what we're proposing to take and immediately use to create our capital improvement project fund. And we can use that money and keep it, um, like we said a minute ago, there's still projects from last year that we were, that we wanted to complete that we haven't gotten done. But if we take this funding and we start a fund, then we can make sure that that money stays for those projects. So it's sort of um, all ties together. Uh, as this uh, slide notes, um, what was the shift? How did we go from where we expected a deficit to where we had a surplus? Our revenues came in about a million dollars higher than we had planned. Um, mostly due to increase in interest earned and the increase in hotel taxes because of hotel prices going through the roof uh, recently. Uh, and then second, um, expenses were lower, uh, mostly in contract services. We had a lot of contract service budgets in different departments that didn't get utilized uh, to the level that um, had been planned, so that was uh, resulted in savings. Uh, and then, as I uh, already explained, the CIP project expenses was much lower than expected. Mostly, that happens on a year-to-year basis because a lot of CIP projects, like the Bubbling Springs project, are multi-year projects. So even though you're planning a, you know, ten million dollar project, it might be maybe a million dollars one year, a million dollars the next year, and then eight million dollars the third year when all the constructions going on. And that's just another reason why making sure each year we're saving that money into a fund for those projects, make sure that we have the money to do the project at, at the um, end of the project. And so, um, we talked a little bit about the um, capital reserve, um, the difference between the budget and actuals. Uh, we looked back over the last three years and we see it's been a trend recently of the budget anticipates three million, four million dollars in projects, but we're really only actually doing, um, besides uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, we're doing about five hundred thousand dollars in projects the other two years and in twenty-one, twenty-two, when we did the most projects, um, we spent about one point five million dollars. And so that shows a couple of things. One is, we did our CIP review earlier this year and we tried to pull back a four million dollar list of projects to a more reasonable two million. And part of that was, we were saying, we just continue to see that we actually, we cannot complete four million dollars worth of projects in, in a given year with the size staff we have. Um, and so, um, we have, uh, the budget for the CIP hadn't been realistic. We cut ours in, basically in half this year when we went through the CIP, so I think it's more realistic at this point. Um, but the other thing that this chart shows is that, uh, if you look at each of these years and you add the, the differences up for the three years, there's essentially ten million dollars in projects that have been um, haven't been uh, completed over those three years. But we haven't protected ten million dollars in funding for those projects. And uh, so that led to, we, we already did the CIP review where we said we have more projects uh, than we have money available. And um, I think uh, when we brought that, the CIP budget totaled something like eighteen million dollars. And I bet the funding was, you know, eight or nine million dollars, so. So you could see how, you know, if, if we aren't making sure that we save that money for the project and, and that we eventually get into a spot where um, when we're finally ready to do the project, we don't have the funding available. So again, part of what we're trying to do is create that fund and keep it there when we plan to do a project. And so, um, just a couple other points, um, uh, again, just one thing I said earlier is that CIP projects aren't, it's, they, they don't typically go on a our annual calendar, uh, or they don't go by, by our annual calendar. A lot of CIP projects take two, three, even more years with something like the Bubbling Springs project, which we're a couple of years into and we now expect to get done in about a year. Um, and so, creating the reserve helps to ensure that that funding remains available through the life of that project. Um, it helps to make sure that the revenue's not pulled into the unassigned fund balance and used for other expenses or just eventually used for operating expenses. Um, uh, it allows the city to create a savings account for the long-term projects. And then lastly, it also will help us plan with, for our budget because what we're recommending doing is identifying about a million and a half dollars each year and just building that into the budget so that we know we have to have that amount of funding available rather than, um, as we saw in the past where there'd be a four million dollar CIP, but we didn't have four million dollars available. So it's just trying to, to make it all work together, uh, and, and make everything add up, so. So with that, um, the positive news I mentioned a little bit ago is last year's budget, we actually anticipate a one point three million dollar surplus. And so, uh, one um, good trick for us is when we have a surplus, if we immediately create a savings account with it for a project, then we're not tempted to spend it. Um, and so, uh, with getting that news, we wanted to create this capital reserve now. And we're recommending using that to create it so that we don't have to pull it out of our unassigned fund balance. So um, we are recommending that the council adopt a resolution to uh, create that reserve policy and fund it with that surplus from um, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, does council have any questions?
Thank you, James. I appreciate the work. Um, so with Bubbling Springs, we're, we don't have the anticipated three point seven million, or I know it's gonna be between three and four million dollars that we're gonna have to come up with. So we're gonna take that from the unassigned general fund balance, correct?
So there's, uh, the plan, um, as of last week, with this not existing, would be that that would have come from the unassigned fund balance, which would have reduced the unassigned fund balance from, I think it was about nine million dollars to five million dollars. Um, one goal is if we can create this reserve fund and actually fund it when we have some of these things happen, that could be another potential funding source for, for those types of projects.
But in this short term and in the, the view of the Bubbling Springs, we're still going to
It was gonna come out of the unassigned fund balance.
Past practice that we're trying to do away with.
And we're also, just to make a point, that we're also gonna look at applying for some grants and things, but that, that's our fallback plan, is the unassigned fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that report and for this proposal. I think it's um, strongly needed um, in order to secure our future for um, implementing capital improvement projects. Mike, I have a couple of questions. Um, you say that we will allocate approximately one point five annually and um, currently the one point three surplus came from three different places. You know, the hotel, interest earned, expenses lower, uh, project costs lower than expected in the contract services area. How, how well, how, how confident are you that we'd be able to um, enjoy another surplus in the future years like this?
Thank you. And I think this year, the surplus was um, uh, uh, good timing as far as, you know, we were looking at creating this policy and trying to figure out how to fund it, and then we got news of the surplus. And so, you know, it was great timing. Uh, in the future, I, my proposal won't be to count on a surplus. It's going to be actually building this into the budget so that upfront, we know that to have a balanced budget, it has to include the one point five million dollars. And so, it's um, it's gonna be tough probably the first couple of years because the first couple of years is like when we sort of have to make adjustments to get our expenses within our revenues by a million and a half dollars. Uh, uh, so, but uh, but the long-term goal will be kind of building that in so it's sus- so our budget's sustainable. And um, each year, we're paying our general operating expenses out of our budget, but we're also starting to build up for capital projects out of our budget, so.
So my second question, in the capital, um, capital improvement project budget, this, that's a CIP or the capital?
Yes.
What are we calling that?
Um, C- it's capital improvement project is uh, is CIP.
Okay, so is it your, your plan then to set up line item allocation plans for each project so we can allocate a specific amount for each of our CIP projects and, and leave it there so we don't touch it?
Um, so
Because it seems to me that we, Bubbling Springs is a good example. We know it's gonna cost this much. You put it in the, into the CIP in a line item allocation and you're able to track it and not touch it for other projects, so.
Yeah, essentially. And so, you know, we um, we recently updated our capital improvement project list. And I think we're down, we, it went from three and a half million dollars to about two million dollars. And so, we're still sort of working, like, in a perfect world, the amount of funding would match the amount of projects. We're closer, where we had three and a half million in projects and no funding planned, but now we have two million dollars in projects, but a million and a half planned. So we don't, they don't quite go one-to-one yet, but um, I think um, the long-term goal would be to be able to just show, okay, here's our capital improvement projects and these are all funded via the um, capital improvement project fund. And so eventually it should match up. I think it'll take a year or two.
All right, great. So uh, one last question is, I know this is a reserve policy. Where does the um, process for prioritizing projects, where does that go? If we have a, do we need a prioritization policy or does it get included here? Is it, does, does that get accomplished somewhere else?
It's accomplished with the uh, actual review of the capital improvement project um, plan. And so, we started that, I, I know I've alluded to that a couple of times, but we've started that process, but we're still planning with the mid-year budget to come and make some more adjustments to sort of make it match one-to-one, so.
All right, thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Are there any public comments regarding this item?
No public comments.
The recommendation is to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the C- City Council of City of Port Winemei, California," "Adopt, adopting the general fund capital reserve policy and authorizing an initial transfer of funds at the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three year end in the amount of one million, five hundred dollars." May I have a motion in a second?
Correct, my, the correct amount might be one million, five hundred thousand?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, I'm not sure what I said, but yeah, one million, five hundred thousand.
Second?
Is there a, a discussion that anybody would like to entertain? Madam Clerk, can we please take a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to item number seven, discussion of potential revisions to cannabis program. Will staff please present the report?
Thank you. And I'll introduce um, Tony Stewart, who's been working on our cannabis program um, for the long term. Uh, but before I just introduce, I'll just, as a reminder, quickly note that we had um, we had done the big development agreement review about a month ago and at that time, we had said that we wanted to, we recommended that council authorize us to go meet with the different um, cannabis businesses in town and try to come up with some uh, win-win opportunities that we can make some changes to help um, our businesses remain uh, competitive, uh, especially with the changes occurring in Oxnard and Ventura currently. So we've done that and this report is gonna talk about some of the things that we've um, talked about with, with them, some some possible win-win opportunities. And then, um, it's also going to go into, as we're going through that process, and identified some issues related to some of the, um, uh, revenue that we are collecting. And we'll explain that issue and what we're proposing to do to address it. And so with that, I'll hand it over to, to Mr. Stewart.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Vega. Good evening, council, staff, audience. So as, uh, Mr. Vega mentioned, we have been working with our cannabis folks. But just, uh, as a refresher, since, uh, none of you were up on the dais back in 2017, but we actually began our cannabis program after a significant, uh, public outreach and whatnot through 2016. Uh, and we were the first, or the second city, right behind, uh, Ojai in Ventura County to, to come up with such a program. And the reason why we did that is because, uh, at the time, we were running a structural deficit with our budget. And so, uh, being built out with a limited number of opportunities to enhance our, uh, economic, um, profile at the time, it was determined to look into, uh, allowing cannabis businesses here in the city. And initially, we allowed, um, basically any type of cannabis business with the exception of outdoor cultivation, mainly because we have no room for outdoor cultivation here in the city. Uh, and we allowed these in unlimited numbers. We figured at the time, um, that the market would determine how many businesses would come into the city. However, um, as most of you are familiar, uh, we have quite a few dispensaries and delivery-only services. And so a cap was put on the number of each of these businesses a couple of years ago. And again, uh, the main purpose for this was to raise money for the general fund. We call this a contractual payment. Uh, I'll talk about that in a little bit. Uh, but we also have secondary benefits such as, uh, local employment opportunities, uh, sales tax revenue, safety via the security officers that are required or security guards that are required. We have found that certain locations have actually improved, uh, their, their crime ratings from the past. Uh, plus it just brings more people, uh, into the city to, uh, shop and eat here and, and, you know, visit our amenities. So, uh, right now, we have, uh, set in place, uh, contractual payment rates, uh, of that table, which include, uh, a $7 per square foot, uh, amount for cultivation. That's a standalone, not with a microbusiness. Manufacturing is 2% of gross of revenue, uh, same with distribution. Retail dispensaries and delivery-only services, which are also called, um, uh, non-storefront dispensaries, are 5% of gross revenues. Microbusinesses that are wholesale are 2%, and microbusiness that's a retail operation is 5% of the gross revenues. And the reason why we have this is because, as you know, we don't have a tax, uh, cannabis tax here in the city. In fact, we are the only, uh, city that I'm aware of that has the development agreement, uh, situation in place in lieu of that tax. And so that's why we call these contractual payments, because they're technically not a tax. And as you are all familiar, I believe, uh, the process for a business to open here in the city is, is a pretty complicated one and very thorough. Uh, 80% of the, uh, work is actually done during the certificate of approval, uh, process, which is done through the, uh, review committee, which is made up of the city manager, uh, police chief, myself, uh, and a couple of other staff members, including our consultants at HDL. Uh, and then if, uh, the certificate of approval is granted by the committee, then the applicant obtains a conditional use permit and the development agreement, uh, from you. Currently, we have nine dispensaries open, uh, seven delivery-only services and one microbusiness, um, say partially open, with one delivery service and one dispensary ready to open, and then two approved, unbuilt, uh, microbusinesses and one pending, uh, dispensary application. So as you're all familiar, up until about a year ago or so, our businesses were doing fairly well. Uh, however, uh, revenues have become flat, if not started dropping from our businesses. And that's due to a number of factors. That includes competition with Oxnard Ventura coming online, for instance, uh, loss of COVID stimulus checks, which were heavily spent during, uh, the time on cannabis. Uh, the economy in general, uh, is not the best right now, uh, with regard to spending. Uh, plus there are, uh, high state taxes and strict regulations that are not helping, uh, our legal businesses, um, fight the black market, basically. So, uh, last year, uh, the city council permitted consumption lounges in conjunction with existing dispensaries. And what I mean by in conjunction is that they have to be either attached or within the dispensary itself. And we limited that to, uh, five dispensaries, but it was done mainly to keep our, uh, our businesses competitive in the overall local marketplace. Currently, we have two lounges open, uh, one with Wheelhouse and the other with Skunk Masters. However, um, as, uh, Mr. Vega mentioned, uh, we think that there may be some additional, uh, program revisions that are needed to, again, uh, maintain the city's competitive edge in the, uh, the local market. So as, uh, Mr. Vega mentioned, we met with several, uh, of the dispensary owners and we sent all of them, uh, surveys, basically asking to brainstorm about what they felt would be, uh, good improvements to help them in our, um, in our local, uh, economy here. Staff, me, uh, also surveyed the regulations of other jurisdictions here, uh, in Ventura County, as well as Santa Barbara County, and also several other cities that were, uh, that are known to have robust cannabis business programs. And, uh, a detailed, uh, spreadsheet with those findings is attached to your staff report. I won't go into all the details here. But in summary, uh, with our meetings and the surveys, uh, the following ideas were, uh, produced, such as reducing the amount of contractual payments to the general fund, uh, being allowed to expand hours of operation, uh, being allowed to have, uh, more temporary uses than they're currently allowed, be allowed to also have additional, uh, temporary signs above and beyond our current, uh, 21-day per year requirement. They asked to make, uh, ish, well, events such as the beach festival be more worth their, uh, return on investment. Uh, they allow, they want it to be allowed to have, uh, certain uses such as standalone distribution, be allowed, uh, where they currently are not. Also be allowed to have standalone consumption lounges, because if their, uh, their location doesn't allow them to have one attached to it or within it, um, that they could, uh, operate one separately from where they're located. And then also, uh, an idea came up would be to organize an association made up the cannabis business operators here in the city, similar to a chamber of commerce, so to speak. And then with regard to the survey, uh, that was done, uh, so looking at that second column there, that's Ventura and Santa Barbara County averages, uh, the hours of operation, uh, averaged about 8:30 a.m. opening. Right now, uh, we're at 9 a.m. to 9 p.m. Uh, cultivation tax, and I use the term tax here because everybody but us has a tax, uh, and that is 4% on average, or 8.5, uh, dollars per square foot. Um, and that was mainly for Thousand Oaks in Ventura County. Uh, the dispensary tax is actually higher than ours at 5.7%. We're at 5%. Uh, distribution tax also slightly higher at 2.2% versus our 2%. Manufacturing tax higher at 3.1% versus our 2%. And then, uh, annual review fees varied, um, among the, the different cities. Some had very high, uh, fees, some had, uh, no fees whatsoever. Ours is right now about $1,680, and that's for that annual development agreement review. And then looking at all of the agencies surveyed, it was also fairly similar with regard to, uh, the averages compared to ours. We're actually pretty favorable right now, um, just looking at this on paper. Uh, I also, uh, like I said, looked at a couple of other cities, um, just, uh, getting ideas on how, uh, they handled, uh, maybe some of their, if they had anything unusual that we didn't have that maybe we could look at. Desert Hot Springs and West Hollywood and Cathedral City all allow consumption lounges, uh, with their dispensaries. Uh, but Palm Springs actually allows them to be standalone. Uh, the rest of the agencies I looked at, uh, don't allow the consumption lounges right now. Uh, and then Desert Hot Springs actually also allows hotels that allow onsite consumption, uh, as long as there was a dispensary located at the hotel property. Um, and that's to sell the cannabis to the guests directly, as opposed to having them come in. And so looking at all that, um, the city manager, police chief, myself, uh, our finance director here and our city attorney met, uh, to go over the ideas, uh, that I just presented to you, as well as the survey findings, uh, to consider, uh, what really could be brought to you for consideration this evening. And so there were six ideas that we came up with, basically. So the first one here is reducing our city fees for the ongoing operation of, uh, businesses here in the city, uh, in three ways, potentially. The first, uh, the chief is actually working on these now, and that's to reduce the live scan background checks that he, uh, that his staff, uh, put together right now for employees by about half, from $400 to $200, um, per, um, background check, and also to allow a $75 transfer fee for employees. And the dispensaries will tell you, I think, that, uh, with their staff turnover, this could be a significant savings for them. Um, we're also going to be pursuing opportunities to potentially, uh, reduce the audit fees that we, uh, collect annually. Currently, our audits are a couple of years behind, so we're doing catch-ups, and that was because of COVID. Um, and then we're going to have a little bit more discussion about, um, that and excise taxes here, uh, in a bit, but that's one of the reasons for, uh, the excise tax situation. Um, right now, HDL is our, uh, contract auditor. Uh, that was because back in 2018, there were very few to choose from, but, uh, nowadays, hopefully there are more firms out there, so, uh, the finance director and I are, uh, considering sending out an RFP, uh, to see if there is somebody that could perform the audits for a lower price, uh, but do the same job. You might ask why we don't do, uh, the audits here, uh, in-house, and we could, but it's preferable for transparency to have a third party, uh, do the actual audits. And then finally, um, we're looking at simplifying the development agreement review fee, um, process a little bit. And, uh, I'm working with the city attorney on, uh, how we write those findings and whatnot. I will probably also be, uh, handing over some of that to the associate planner, who has a lower hourly rate than I do. Uh, so we're looking at, uh, having a reduction in the annual review fee cost as well. It won't be huge, but still every little bit, I think, would help. The second item, uh, we had two of our dispensaries specifically asked to be in operation from 8 a.m. to 10 p.m. Uh, right now, our lounges are allowed to go, uh, to 10 p.m. And actually, we've been allowing our, um, dispensaries since COVID to be open, uh, at 8 a.m., uh, to spread out the hours at the time. But, um, right now, we are, um, supposed to be, uh, 9 a.m. to 9 p.m., but, uh, talking to the chief and with regard to making sure that, uh, the security was employed for those extra two hours, uh, we think that we could possibly, well, that we could support the additional hours, uh, on a permanent basis, uh, which again, would hopefully help increase, uh, the sales at each facility. We would also recommend allowing freestanding consumption lounges. Uh, for example, HPC right now is on the third floor. They have the room, but they have to, would have to sprinkle the entire building, uh, which would be cost prohibitive. But if they could find a different location, um, they might be interested in, in operating such a lounge. Uh, we would still recommend that the existing cap five be, uh, kept in place and that, of course, our existing dispensaries, who are known entities, be the operators of these additional, of these lounges in different locations. Also point out that if somebody did want a new, uh, lounge at a certain location, they would still have to go through the entire process, I meant, with the, uh, rule, CUP, and, uh, the development agreement. In working with, uh, one of our, um, folks that, uh, you'll hear from in a little bit, uh, in a separate item, a request was made to reduce the, uh, contribution towards the general fund, um, from, for cultivation operations for microbusinesses only. Uh, this would only affect, uh, two of our, um, businesses. Uh, one is the existing one in operation, the other one has not even, uh, started building yet. So we have not been, uh, accounting for their revenues in our, um, budgeting at all. And so again, we looked at the other cities, uh, especially in, uh, this county and Santa Barbara. Again, they average 4%, so if we did drop to 3%, um, it would be a little bit lower than that average. But the idea is, was at least to hopefully help these businesses, maybe incentivize them to finish their build-outs and begin generating, uh, revenues, uh, at all, uh, for us with regard to their cultivation. Uh, the fifth one, uh, is a little trickier. It would be to allow standalone distribution operations in the commercial zone. Right now, they're only allowed in the manufacturing zone. And this would require an amendment to the, um, municipal code, the zoning ordinance, and it would also require approval by the coastal commission. And the reason why we didn't, uh, consider this back in 2017 was because we didn't want to touch the zoning ordinance at the time. We wanted to have a standalone, um, uh, cannabis ordinance, uh, because that would not require, uh, coastal commission action. And we were very interested in trying to facilitate getting the program up and running. Uh, so at the time, we basically compared, uh, our allowed uses, for instance, a dispensary to, uh, permitted use in that respective zone. Say a dispensary is similar to a pharmacy, which is allowed by right, uh, in the commercial zone. So that's how we came up with the, uh, the uses that were allowed at the time. Um, if we did do this, this would be, uh, kind of a longer-term, um, project, because again, it would require, uh, going back and going to the coastal commission, so it wouldn't happen too quickly here. Uh, and then finally, uh, we would, uh, recommend being allowed or allowing our dispensaries to operate, uh, up to two temporary uses that are minor in nature, say a food truck or vendor tent out on a parking space, uh, for up to twice a month without, uh, having to get a special use permit from staff every time. Uh, just allow them a little bit more freedom and, uh, would, uh, also not impact staff. Uh, however, if we had a larger event, uh, say what Tree Factor had, uh, that, uh, recently for the Day of the Dead, that would still need to come back to you as a special use permit, uh, to be approved by, uh, the council. And then there were a couple of other, uh, ideas too. For instance, I mentioned additional, uh, temporary signage, but we're already looking at updating our very antiquated sign ordinance and, uh, looking at allowing all businesses to have additional temporary signage. They'll be coming back to you separately anyway. Uh, and then finally, um, the consideration of the, uh, Cannabis Businesses Association, that would be outside the purview of, of staff, uh, and, and the city here, like I said, be more of a chamber of commerce. Uh, we could certainly participate, but that would be something that the, um, cannabis businesses would be expected to, uh, form, uh, if there was enough interest on their end. So we're not actually asking for any action on your part at this point. And so at this point, um, I'm going to turn this over to, um, Mrs. Sero here, our finance director, and she's going to talk to you about the excise tax.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, city council, staff and members of the public. I'm gonna go over the excise taxes as it relates to cannabis businesses. Cannabis businesses are subject to two taxes, the regulars, sales taxes, and then a 15% excise tax. Prior to January 1st, 2023, the cannabis distributors were required to calculate the excise tax and collect it from the retailer and submit it to the state of California, um, to the, uh, and the calculation was complex because they were selling the, the product at wholesale, and there was a markup that they were supposed, they were using to markup the product in order to collect that excise tax. That markup ranged anywhere from 60% to 75%. Um, and they were responsible for, um, sending, submitting those taxes to the state. Then on the other hand, the retailer, um, was, uh, supposed to collect those taxes from the consumer. Um, and there were certain, specific requirements that that retailer was supposed to, uh, follow. One of them was that on the sales tax receipt that the consumer received, um, had to have language in there that includes, stating that the sales tax was included. And, um, the city's position, um, on the excise tax was always not to tax on tax. And so the city's position, um, when this, uh, sales, uh, when the cannabis businesses were initiated, was to set the contractual payment to the city based on grocery receipts. Um, and the intent was to allow for deduction of any taxes, such as the sales tax and the cannabis, um, excise tax. Uh, but because of the complexity of setting up the point-of-sale systems at the time and being able to identify that excise tax and provide support, um, that those excise taxes were actually collected from the consumer, as of January 1st, 2021, uh, the grocery receipts reported to the city did not include that deduction of excise taxes anymore. So they were being, uh, allowed all the way through 2021, January 1st, 2021, because it was not consistent, um, retailers, uh, were not able to provide that support, uh, to the city. And, um, the distributors were the one at the time submitting the taxes to the state of California. and the distributors were the one at the time submitting the taxes to the state of California. And so two recent, I'm gonna say recent events prompted the city to really revisit this gross receipt calculation again. And that was, as Mr. Stewart mentioned, the HDL audits. We put a pause on the audits because of COVID. So there were a set of audits that were completed from inception to right about before COVID. And then after COVID happened, there was a pause on the audits from HDL. We started the audits early twenty twenty-three, which was about the same time that the state shifted the responsibility of the collection and reporting of excise tax from the retailer, from the distributor to the retailer. And during the audits, it was prompted the city and the staff and HDL to reconvene and really look at the development agreements and really take a look at what that gross receipts language in the development agreements provided or stated. And basically, the, the language states for all but three agreements that any taxes that are collected for the purposes of being forwarded to the state should be deductible from gross receipts, which was not the case. Staff has gone back, and we have calculated the amount of retroactive credit that would be due to those businesses from January first, twenty twenty-one, which was the time that we, that they, the excise was not deducted from the gross receipts through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And the amount is seven hundred and fifty thousand for all businesses, except for the three. Those development agreements are a little bit different, and those are the original, the first three agreements. The language on the first three agreements are, doesn't, the language doesn't really clarify the deduction of sales taxes or excise taxes. But staff is recommending, we've looked at this with the auditors, and if the credit was extended, extended to all of the businesses, including all three, the total amount of the credit would be a million one twenty. And so three hundred and seventy thousand pertains to those three businesses. And this will ensure that all of the cannabis businesses are treated similarly. The funds for the one million one twenty, as Mr. Vega mentioned, our results this year were stronger in twenty twenty-three than we had in the budget. Staff, in anticipation of the payout, has set a liability aside, so revenues have been reduced by the million one twenty. And those will be reflected if council approves the appropriation on the audited financials for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Again, after this deduction, which is already net of the information that was presented earlier, we anticipate, staff anticipates surplus in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three of a million three, which is the amount that we are recommending to be transferred to the reserve, the capital improvement reserve fund. And no additional impact from the unassigned is expected, anticipated from this payout or this retroactive payment. And we're anticipating that the unassigned fund balance at the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four will be approximately six point six million. And then going forward, the approval of the action, this action would require a budget adjustment to the revenues, because we're gonna be collecting less as the dispensaries will be allowed to deduct the excise tax from gross revenues. Therefore, we'll be paying the contractual payment on a lesser amount of revenues. We're not asking for an appropriation at this time, as we're gonna be coming back to council with the budget adjustments early in, in twenty twenty-four. And we'll incorporate this into those, into the mid-year budget. And the reduction of the required contractual payment for the cultivation operations of retail micro businesses from the five percent to the three percent may, could also have a negative impact, fiscal impact, but no budget adjustment is necessary, as the revenue was not known at the time when we produced the budget. Therefore, it's not included in the budget, so any revenues will be additional and will be included in the mid-year. And then the reduction would only affect the two approved businesses. It's anticipated that this reduction will encourage the completion of the build-out of each of these business facilities. One in particularly is partially built out, and the other has not commenced construction. And once operational, the revenues generated would be increased, increased above today's sales levels. And so the recommendation for today would be to receive the report provided by staff, take public testimony on the matter, and after doing so, authorize staff to take the steps necessary to implement the six items recommended to improve the city's cannabis program. Number two, to authorize the appropriation for the refund of cannabis revenue related to the excise tax collected from the period January first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three in the amount of one million one twenty. And number three, approve staff's recommendation to standardize the calculation of gross revenue effective July first, twenty twenty-three to allow for the exclusion of excise and sales taxes for all existing cannabis businesses. And we'll take any questions now.
Are there any questions for staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you help me understand, I was listening intently, but maybe I missed it. When you spoke about the first three dispensaries, you used the word "if" we allow the credit. Why, why wouldn't we?
The language, the, the language in the development agreement for the first three dispensaries is slightly different than the language for the remaining development agreements. The remaining agreements is very specific as far as the stating that the tax collected for the purpose of being forwarded to a taxing authority should be deducted. And that's not the case for the other three.
Okay, so, so did the three first dispensaries receive a benefit that the additional ones did not?
Not related to this, and I'm trying to think if there's like any benefit. We could really argue they received, and I don't think there's any additional benefit. Just to give like a little bit of an example of what we're referring to, like the first three basically said, you have to pay this fee on any revenue. And then the rest of them said, you have to pay this fee on any revenue except tax, except sales taxes or excise taxes. So those ones are very clear that they do the refund. We had to meet and sort of talk through, the first three are not as clear, and you could sort of make the argument either way. I ultimately recommended refunding it, and it's because I believe, kind of putting myself back into two thousand seventeen cannabis world when things were, you know, it was like we had no idea, we were trying to sort of guess what was gonna happen next. I think that that language originally saying we're collecting five percent on any revenue, I think it was sort of assumed that obviously we wouldn't collect it on tax, you know, on sales tax or excise tax. And so it's not clear in the agreement, and so you can make the argument, well, clearly, we didn't add it, so we clearly must not have intended. Or like I said, putting yourself back in time, I think at that time, we all just assumed, well, obviously, we aren't collecting on taxes, a tax on tax, essentially, what our finance director said. So we've reviewed it, we've worked through that. We are recommending refunding it for those three. Those, that's one of the recommended actions in this staff report, because it is a discretionary decision. The other, the other dispensaries, it's, we're just correcting a mistake. This one, it's, we're basically asking the council to confirm that our interpretation of that language is correct, and then allowing us to do that.
I do have a follow-up question, if you don't mind. So based on the records, can you all tell whether they paid based on the taxes and excise taxes or not?
So we can see that they paid, well, I'm gonna ask finance to confirm this. So we could see that they've paid five percent of even their excise tax, right? And we've confirmed that.
And I think one of the ways to confirm it is the HDL, because they do the revenue audits. And so for the ones, some of the ones that have been completed, the newer audits, the businesses did not deduct the excise taxes. But the dollar amount, the one million one twenty, is our estimate based on the information that we have received from the dispensaries, the, the gross revenue. We do intend to validate that further before we actually pay out the, the money.
And we think there's little possibilities, because one point would be, we were working through this, that if a cannabis dispensary sells cannabis, there's excise tax. If the cannabis company sells bottled water or a T-shirt, there likely isn't excise tax. So part of the validation, we have our finance department and HDL kind of making sure that the numbers match up, that, 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 that we have the correct amount that included the excise tax and the ones that don't include excise tax.
No pun intended, but could we break this down? Because there seems to be a lot of smoke in the air here. I mean, let me see if I could just say what I think I understand. We had two community development agreements in play. One that caused the taxing of the tax, in this case, it's a five percent fee, affected seven dispensaries and not three. And we, the city, is holding on to one point two million dollars that we need to give back. Is that correct?
Basically. The dispensaries, just to be clear, the three, they've all been paying the five percent on their excise tax and subject to, we're confirming that, making sure we double-check it.
This is where it gets smoky, so.
They've all been paying it. The first three, it was vague language as to whether they should have been paying it or not. The other ones, it wasn't vague, they shouldn't have been paying it. So we definitely need to refund those ones, and then we're asking for, to also confirm we're refunding the original three.
But everyone's in agreement that we shouldn't be paying a five percent fee on taxes paid.
That's what, that's our understanding, and that's what we're recommending to correct the first three. Well, to correct all of them, but particularly the first three. That's part of our analysis of why we're recommending, even though the language wasn't clear on those three, to say, I don't think the city's intent was to collect a tax on it, or collect a revenue on a tax, because it's not a tax, but to collect a revenue on state tax.
And then my only other question is regarding cultivation. Cultivation and manufacturing has been, well, actually, I have another question after this. I think we only, we don't have any cultivation in the city except for.
Tradecraft.
Tradecraft.
Yeah, and they're the next item on the agenda, so we'll get into that a little bit more.
But can't that next item affect the way we feel about one of the recommend, one of the six recommendations, which is to lower it? So it kind of seems a little premature.
Yeah, and, yeah. We can hold that particular item for the next item, and I think particularly with some of the late-breaking news we got from Tradecraft, I think it would make sense to hold that particular recommendation for the next item.
Okay, and then my final question is, I think I heard finance say that cannabis revenues have flat, or have gotten flat or may have dropped. So can we definitively, definitively say what the percentage drop in sales has been over the last year? And have we adjusted our budget as such?
We, so I'm gonna see if we have a number to what they've dropped, but we, we, they have not been adjusted to show a drop yet. That was sort of that last slide. We are planning to make an adjustment in January for the mid-year budget and, and start building that into the budget, because we expect, we expect a four hundred thousand dollar drop just from not collecting the tax on tax in the future. And so there's four hundred thousand dollars, but there's still the ultimate question. And I think when we've met with the dispensaries, it's becoming very clear that they are seeing drops on top of, you know, on top of just the not collecting the excise tax portion, there's gonna be an additional drop. So we're looking at that. We had a meeting Friday with cannabis tax consultants to talk about the impacts they're seeing statewide. And we're gonna have to build some of that into the budget. There's gonna be some impacts.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Are there any public comments regarding this one item?
Yes, we have a public comment from Sahir Walshi.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro-Tep Mayor, staff, and everybody else and audience. In regards to the ad, I'm, I'm one of the individuals that actually is a partner for the city of Port Wainimi. I support a lot of cannabis businesses, a lot of deliveries, including another dispensary, HPC. So I'm here to say that I'm in support for all the recommendations the staff and the admin is making in regards to our taxes, our fees. In regards to the distribution license, I would love to see that still take place, because I'd love to figure out how to get additional tenants into my building as the market is changing and the economy is taking a different toll. In addition to add to that, I would love, I know I brought this up to the staff, but I would love to figure out how to actually go back to some of the old regulations, which includes gambling and card rooms, and seeing if we can add that into some mixed-use property usages and get, take advantage of that, different industry, and see if we can get new tenants there. Breweries, which are working and building really quickly, and seeing if we can do that into our commercial zone properties also. The smoking lounge, expanding, being able to expand, as they said, into a different space. Or for example, we have additional space upstairs we'd like to have into the game room or additional space to increase the amount of customers coming through the door. I heard the non-smoking policy or the speeches that all the kids gave, which was pretty amazing, and I guess that's one of the reasons we created a smoking lounge. What I'd like to create is a different type of smoking lounge also, which is the cigar lounge or a tobacco lounge, where it's indoor, ventilated, and it's keeping that harm, giving the opportunity for those individuals in those mixed-use purposes to go have a place to go and be able to smoke in a safe environment and still keep the health concerns down for the community. That's it for me, guys. Thank you, guys, again, for supporting all the cannabis businesses. Again, we are partners, as we have invested in quite a bit of real estate in this location, and we have supported the cannabis businesses. So anything we can do to help them survive would be a great, great help. Thank you, guys.
Real quick, none of the recommendations had anything to do with allowing them to create their own organization, like a cannabis organization? I know it was mentioned, but it's not in any of the recommendations, right?
Right, again, that would be more on the businesses themselves to create. I mean, we could certainly support it, but it wasn't a recommendation of the city.
Because one of my ideas that I had had at one point was to have, since they do have to provide a one percent back to nonprofits, a way for nonprofits to approach the cannabis businesses, and then for cannabis businesses to then decide which one of those projects they would want to fund, but that's, that's not in discussion tonight, so. But I do like that idea of them organizing and, and starting something like a Chamber of Commerce, you know?
Keep in mind, too, if a nonprofit comes to us, we actually make that suggestion that they go approach the dispensaries as well.
That's good. All right, so the recommendation is to.
Sorry, Mayor, we do have one written public comment.
Thank you.
Dear Tony Stewart and members of the Port Wainimi City Council, we would like to express our gratitude to the board and the city of Port Wainimi for recognizing the difficulties and obstacles faced by compliant cannabis businesses in this atmosphere, where our business is still considered unlawful according to federal law. We cannot operate our business like other businesses in Port Wainimi due to federal tax law two ADE. This law prohibits us from deducting any otherwise ordinary business expenses from gross income associated with the trafficking of Schedule One or Two substances. As a result, we are unable to take advantage of any business deductions. in our tax on everything we pay other than the cost of goods. This results in us paying over a million dollars yearly to the federal and state governments. Furthermore, we still face many other challenges such as banking issues, oversaturation of dispensaries and competition from the black market cannabis sales. These challenges make it difficult for all compliant cannabis businesses to operate. It is important to remember that this business is not just for recreational use. It is proven that cannabis cannabinoids, including CBD products, are beneficial for people as an option for the treatment of conditions that would otherwise entail prescription and opiate use. We are grateful that the city is considering changing the fee structure to exclude excise tax in their calculations. This will help us to better serve and assist the various programs in the city that will actually benefit the citizens of Port Wainimi. Any relief the city can provide will enable us to keep our doors open. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Patricia Tatum, Mark Tatum. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um and then just to clarify, the recommendation is to include those other three businesses, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the recommendation is to, one, authorize staff to take steps necessary to implement the six items recommended to improve the city's cannabis program. Two, authorize appropriation for the refund of cannabis revenue related to excise tax collected from January first, twenty twenty one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty three in the amount of about uh one million one hundred and twenty thousand. And three, approve staff's recommendation to standardize the calculation of gross revenue effective July first, twenty twenty three, to allow the exclusion of excise and sales taxes for all existing cannabis businesses. May I have a motion in a second?
Move to approve all staff's recommendation second.
And may I, real quick, we did have a comment about uh holding off on the the three percent uh versus five percent for cultivation. Uh did we want to do that with the next item or? We've got four now.
So it's um removing the um recommendation related to cultivation um uh fees until the next item.
Okay. Um, Madam. Madam Clerk, can we please take a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
All right, moving on to public hearing. Item number eight, continued hearing on annual development agreement, compliance review for Tradecraft Farms and finding the exemption from SEQA. Will staff please present the report?
Yeah, um I will briefly note, I think um uh Mr. Stewart and I may each sort of speak to a couple of points. But um we had held a uh public hearing on October sixteenth, twenty twenty three, uh last month uh to review um eight development agreements. Um the city council unanimously took action on seven of the eight, but continued the hearing on Tradecraft Farms Development Agreement to this meeting, uh date certain. Um and uh it was continued to provide the developer time to um to provide additional information related to some requests that they had, including uh one of the requests was that the city um look at the cultivation um uh percentage uh payment required. Um and so uh we looked at that, as mentioned in the last item. We looked um at some of the areas, uh some of the different agencies that have the cultivation fee, um are are they actually have a cultivation tax? And um we found that that was the one fee that we were higher than average for look uh for the agencies we compared to. Um a couple of the um agencies uh were at four percent. Um and um uh and then a couple were even at three percent, um including the uh only other, I think the only other um, well, actually uh it was um Ojai was at three percent and I think City of Ventura was at four percent. And so um so we looked at those. We um proposed uh the three percent um the reduction to three percent uh to the um applicant Tradecraft Farms. And um um on um Thursday, and then uh on Thursday, we received a notice that um Tradecraft was gonna put together an additional proposal, because uh as they were running through numbers, they were um uh uh still running into challenges. And then I think it was Friday that we got a proposal from Tradecraft and we shared that um uh with the council and posted it. Uh but there was a proposal, a sort of an updated proposal from Tradecraft. Um because we had scheduled, continued the public hearing to today as a date certain, we uh ultimately um decided to uh recommend that the council still hold the public hearing and um actually give Tradecraft an opportunity to explain their proposal. Um and then from there, we um sort of depending on um that explanation, uh we'd uh were planning to recommend that either the council, if the council is comfortable enough to find, finish the review of that development agreement, that would be one path, or it might be uh after receiving that, if there's more questions, sending uh you know, kind of giving us an idea of those questions and then we might need to go back and work with Tradecraft. But our recommendation is uh essentially to open up the um public hearing and receive the proposal from from Tradecraft uh at this time. Um anything to add? Us.
No, that that sounds like the correct path.
Does council have any questions for staff? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. The time is now eight forty-four P M. Are there any public comments regarding this item? Or is um Tradecraft gonna come up?
Yeah, I think could um would Tradecraft be willing to speak? And then, I don't know, do we have any public comments otherwise?
We don't have other public comments.
So uh if Tradecraft would like to speak and just sort of explain their proposal.
A carbon copy of what we provided uh Tony with, Tony and uh the city manager with on Friday, um just in case he wants.
I believe that's what you just said, Paula, right? That this is the document that you sent to us uh on Friday. That they basically already have.
The document sent Friday, we posted on Friday at about two thirty P M. So we we made that available to the public.
Not I'm not gonna lie, I was feeling a little uncomfortable about the group that was advocating for non, no smoking. So I'm kind of glad they're gone. Anyone proceed?
Yeah, I think we'll let you take it. Paula's Paula's put a lot of time into this. I have to be honest, I haven't had any time at all. James and Paula have have really um, but yeah, mostly Paula, put a lot of work into this. Um you're wearing good hands, because Paula knows what she's talking about. And uh I I was, I did notice um I had not received any, maybe reached out, there was a survey or something, nobody could talk to me or call me. Paula had been asked about that, but we we weren't uh didn't get to take advantage, take advantage of that and and talk to you about that, you know, I would have liked to. But I know that regarding this, um Paula's put a lot of work in it, so.
Then, real quick, can can you make sure that you speak into the mic so that it's recorded on on the video? Thank you.
So did any, do you have any questions for us regarding this? I don't know if you've already had a chance to review it. Um.
I I don't think anybody uh, so I've reviewed it, but I don't know that the council has, because um we had given them the full agenda and then this came as an appendix. So I'd suggest just sort of like um giving the highlights of, you know, what's being proposed versus what we originally were discussing.
Gotcha. So to kind of continue the conversation from the last meeting, uh we discussed a lot of factors, industry factors, market conditions that were really hard upon our business, uh which are outlined in this presentation or proposal you just received. And because of those factors, um it seems that we can really only sustain uh doing what we identify as phase one of the build-out, which is uh building out all of our distribution areas um and an additional mature flower room and a bedroom.
And and if I can comment real quick, and 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 I only, I'm picking up and I I don't want to jump ahead here, but I I feel like someone feels like maybe we like switched what we were proposing to do, and that's not the case at all. I actually stood up here a month ago in October and said that we, and I don't know if it's just the way that you're wording it, um but we we cannot build out another six hundred lights. It will cost millions of dollars. And that is, that's a death sentence for my company, and I can't allow it to happen. And and that, and so I I I don't want to come off combative and I I don't want to do that at all. But we have always said, and I've said it, and I and I got in trouble by my entire staff, because I was very short with Paula the other day. I've said it eight times in eight emails over the last eight months. I'll tell you exactly what we can do. It's exactly this, we have said this since day one. If we have a year to do that, we can do that. And it's a horrible business decision. It's an absolute horrible business decision. But we will do it, because we are invested in this community and we we're invested in our development agreement. We understand that there are two two ways to see this. I absolutely understand that. Um that is, all of the infrastructure for the entire facility to turn on, uh another fifty light room, it would require us to, anything past that would require us to get a a very expensive uh electrical upgrade. We're paying over eighty cents a kilowatt in Port Wainimi. If anyone here has a connection at Southern California Edison and you can get us an agricultural uh deal, which is what we deserve, because we're agricultural, but they won't give it to us, um we could even compete with Los Angeles, where we where we're where we're big farmers. So so I hope I didn't jump ahead too hard, but I just wanted to make sure that I I I make it very clear. I don't believe we've pulled the rug out or switched or changed up or anything. I've said the same thing for for eight months.
If if you can just help explain, because I think Tony knows this like the back of his hand. I don't know that any any of us do, so just help explain it. When I'm saying um the switch, I mean what was previously approved to.
Understood.
This.
Well, that would be a switch, yes.
Yeah, and so.
I agree.
What, can you just sort of reiterate? So what was, how many rooms and phases were previously approved? Like and ultimately, how many um, you know, lights and everything versus now what's being proposed? As and and this is the first time that the council has had an opportunity to hear a different proposal from what was previously approved. So what that is?
The 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 facility is seventeen thousand square feet, I think. It's a large building. It was the only building left in all of Port Wainimi. We relate to the game, right? We were like number nine. Um we bid off a lot. We took a big building, you know? I um to to turn that entire facility into a cannabis cultivation facility was a was a, you know, it the, what's that? It was a cowboy move. It was a cowboy move. And and we do cowboy moves. We've done it all over. Cannabis was at thirty-five hundred dollars a pound at the time, and we could justify it, right? Even though we can do much better in L A in in different areas and stuff like that, but it made sense to be to be out here. Um I I think there's six hundred lights that are on the original. Okay.
Flower.
Okay, ma- maybe it's only three hundred flower and three hundred uh nursery or something like that. Um what we're proposing now is another fifty lights minimum, probably sixty. I think I can get out of that, because that's what the engineer said that we would be allowed to do before we had to get a very expensive upgrade. And one of the reasons somebody's not completing their microbusiness right now is because they've been trying to get an upgrade for two years from Southern California Edison. So I could never in good faith promise you by the end of the year that I would have or or within one year that I would do something that I don't have control over, and I won't ever promise you something that I I can't keep that promise. Um so we would end up with a hundred and twenty flowering lights as opposed to three hundred flowering lights. So it's it's two-thirds of a reduction of what we had hoped to do. That build-out would could be two point five million dollars right now. So.
The only question I have is since, you know, our staff went through this and and they understand it, do they approve of it? That's the gist of it, is what is their recommendation? Is this something they are okay with approving?
Somebody was blocking me, they don't want me to speak, I think. Um I think um to boil it down, and and so, like I said, we can make a decision on this tonight, or, you know, it is a big decision. So if the council, you know, wants to continue it and we can look at it again, I think um I think a couple of key points, and then I'll answer the question. But I think you said the plants went from thirty-five hundred a pound to a thousand dollars a pound.
Yeah.
Is the value of it, and the revenue is essentially then a third of what you thought it was gonna be. Um and so I think at the end of the day, that seems to be what we're hearing sort of across the board from uh people that were looking at cultivation and um in our city, but also other cities and in other counties. I said at the last meeting that I hadn't heard of any cultivation opening in Ventura County, and I think partially because it, the incentive wasn't there to do it. Um we have other cannabis uh business owners in the building, and I don't know if any of them would like raise their hand and sign up to to do this right now. Um I have a feeling the answer is no. Um so uh so anyway, um so there's that point. It's definitely less than what the city originally bargained for. That's a challenge, and that's where the decision is hard for the council. You know, originally the city budget, or, you know, basically bargained for six hundred lights worth of cultivation. Now it's gonna be a hundred twenty lights worth of cultivation, you know, that's a big difference. But I'm also looking at it from the flip side of uh, I don't necessarily, if you don't get those hundred twenty lights, I don't think you have any lights of cultivation in Port Wainimi. So it's, you know, um less than what was originally bargained for, but it's probably more than we're gonna get anywhere else at this point. Um and so um for those reasons, I think it boils down to, as long as this is something that the city council is supportive of um in in uh, you know, and wants to help um provide this business opportunity, I think this is our best opportunity to provide it at this point. So but uh essentially, we're agreeing to take less than what we originally asked for.
Yeah, we're not losing anything.
Yeah, well, because I think the argument would be we're losing six hundred lights, but I don't think we're ever gonna get six hundred lights.
May I say something to you, and and I don't mean to interrupt you. I think it's three hundred lights flowering, which is really what we're, you really always talk about flowering lights, all the other lights don't really.
So from three hundred originally to a hundred twenty now?
Maybe three twenty or something.
So a third of what we're getting.
But but I I did want to make one point, because I I I, we are a company of integrity. Very much so. If we were just talking about a lower profit margin, we wouldn't be here. Yep. I will go out of business, and I can't do that. That's that's my, that's what hurts inside, is that I I can't justify it, because there's no math that works. And if there was a math that worked, and if somebody could show me the math that worked, heel, all day long, because we are a company of integrity and we always keep our word.
Yeah, so the.
So that's why it's a very difficult situation.
Yeah, so to answer the question directly of, so what would staff recommend? I think unless there's other concerns, if it's solely just, you know, should we accept a lesser bargain than we had originally anticipated for? I think the answer is yes, unless there's other concerns that council has. Yeah, um and if I may, just just add a little something for for legal review and whatnot. Um this item is an annual review subject to, based on government code six sixty-five, eight sixty-five and whatnot. So the process for reviewing development agreements under that, under sixty-five, eight sixty-five point one, is that the the person subject to the development agreement shall demonstrate in good faith that they have complied with the terms of the development agreement. However, if the agency, if the city finds that they have not complied in good faith, then the city is free to modify or cancel the agreement. But it twice in this statute, the term good faith, failure to comply in good faith, based on substantial evidence. So if council wants to modify the agreement here and not at a later date at a different hearing, uh typically, development agreements are modified via ordinance, because they're legislative actions. Um it the standard really to look for here is is good faith and substantial evidence.
They have just one question. Um so. They have just one question. So, microbusiness, dispensary, cultivation, and distribution. So when you said if you had another year, you would have the 120 lights, do you mean that you will have all three elements?
Yeah. It's the distribution that makes us all go, because there's been a little bit of...
Yes, within, within a year, it would be, the distribution areas of the facility would be built out in addition to additional cultivation areas.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just, just want to make sure that we're not with the lights, and then we still don't have that third piece.
Correct.
Okay.
So are we strictly on questions right now, or?
Questions. Questions.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yeah, I just, my concern is that there's a lot to digest here, and having just received this, I don't know that I am prepared to vote on this tonight. I don't feel like I've got a good understanding. I mean, if you've come, if you came to us and said, this is, you know, what is contained in here? What is it that we should be seeing in this report? What is it that you're trying to tell us in this report? That would be helpful. So if you could do that, maybe you could let her speak?
I will let her.
Yeah, thank you.
Real quick, and I also want to ask, so we modify it, the question is, how many lights? What is it that you want us to modify? Like, what's that amount?
So, if you look at the second to last page of the little report I gave you guys, that shows the proposed revised floor plan. It's essentially, we'd be adding like a 54 light flower room, maybe 60, and a veg room for immature plants. And that would be, and that combined with the existing flower room we already have built, would give you your 120. So it would be adding one mature flowering room and one immature...
We would basically be doubling what we have now, which would be maxing out our power, which would bring us to the edge of where we would then have to engage with Socales and to do a very large upgrade, which would be very expensive and very time-consuming, which we would do if it wasn't just, it would, it's just a path to bankruptcy.
And then we also held off on the tax for cultivation. 3%? That's doable?
Yes.
Yes, we'd agree to 3%. We appreciate it. We appreciate it very much.
Any other further questions?
I, you brought up this desire to be treated like an ag company. Is that realistic through Edison? Is that something that would help you?
Oh, an ag. I thought you said egg. I was like, who brought up eggs? Yeah.
I did go, I did call, there's an agricultural rate that is offered by Southern California Edison, if, for agricultural, for companies that are producing agricultural product. And so I was on the phone, on hold for one hour, waiting to speak with a representative, who when they found out that we were agriculturally growing cannabis, literally scolded me and said, and told me that cannabis is, does not count as agriculture. And, and so that, that shut it, that shut it down right there. We were just trying to reduce the rates from, you know, something that is absolutely unaffordable. You know, growing indoor cannabis is electricity-power intensive. And at 85 cents a kilowatt hour, it makes it almost cost prohibitive for us to even proceed.
I've heard that stated, yes.
So, you know, I was trying to just get that reduced even a little bit. And, and I was scolded by the, by the SCE rep.
Yeah. I think we've already talked about what we pay in other towns too, so it's...
Question? No? Yes, no, it's okay.
By all means.
Please.
This will be the last one. Okay, so we were asked to turn to Appendix 7? Okay, and when Councilmember Hernandez asked about the, or maybe it was the mayor asked about the lights, I kind of thought I heard a little hesitation. So I just want to ask the question again, so that I'm clear. So it says Phase 1, and there's some circles in there. There's like vegetation room or something?
Yes, that's an immature plant room.
That, those lights are already completed?
No, the, the squares, if you will, that are highlighted in yellow, are the proposed future rooms that we will build out over the next year.
Another 50 or 60 lights?
Yeah.
And then on the previous page...
Flower Room 1 has already been done. That's already operating.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So essentially, instead of completing all those rectangles, it's only the two top rectangles, right? And that's what you can do right now?
Within a year, yes.
A year?
And then the areas on the second floor, which are on the back of the sheet.
So there's another three rooms upstairs as well, but that will handle the distribution, processing, drying, trimming, all of that, so that we can fully function under one roof and pay those taxes as well.
One question. Would solar be an option for generating your electricity in the big flat? No.
Sorry.
Solar.
Thought about it.
Yeah, thought about it.
Cost prohibitive as well.
Yeah, we've been told no.
All right. So we, city attorney and I were just quickly discussing, and I think to speak to that point about having to absorb a lot of information at one time, we were sort of thinking, the basic question that the city attorney explained was that right now the question is if it's, if they're acting in good faith. And so essentially, right now the council could find that they are or are not acting in good faith. If they are acting in good faith, we continue the development, or, you know, we, that works for tonight. And then we are going to have to modify each of these development agreements with some of the changes that we're proposing. So we're going to have to bring that back at a later date. So for now, it can just be, okay, we find good faith and, you know, continue on that path. So, so that's one simple possibility for tonight.
Are there any public comments regarding this item?
No public comments.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and, or is there any, anything else that needs to be mentioned? So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, the time being 9:05 PM. And we have before us a recommendation to...
I think it's to, at this point, it's to determine whether the applicant is acting in good faith, in which case, we will then work with them on future modification.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion that, yeah, that we believe that you're acting in good faith, and that we're going to work with the, with the city staff. Is there a second? Any discussion? Councilmember Gama, I know you wanted to discuss something?
No.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the observation that there's a lot of cannabis cowboys that came to town, and they were all going to have flower rooms. And evidence of good faith is, at the time, the market was very different. And it's changed dramatically. And now it's very easy to see why you can't sustain that agreement that was previously agreed to. But also, looking back, we have seen all these other manufacturers, cultivation plans, drop by the wayside. I mean, Industrial was slated for cultivation. Another operation tried over there at Surfside. So anyways, I just think the history of this whole era is very well documented, that good faith, yes, I believe you operated in good faith, and that the market and the changed on you dramatically. And so as such, we as a city, we need to accommodate and try to help you be successful. And so I would like to...
Comment?
Oh, go ahead.
Just realized there's one point that I am not clear on, and I just want to make, I want to see if we're all clear on it. So, accepting the good faith, and allowing us to continue working on the development agreement and modifying in the future. But is the council intention at this point to reduce that cultivation to 3%? Okay, got it.
Well, I think you might say it on the report, but I, like, it was just handed to us, but I briefly went over it.
Okay. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yeah, I was just going to say that in the previous item, we, there was a recommendation that the businesses form a business coalition. And by doing that, you stand a better chance of getting heard by Edison or the Clean Power Alliance, if possible. I mean, picking up the phone and calling Edison is not going to do it. I think you really need to, to go prepared and make your plea. I sit on the Ventura Regional Energy Alliance. Maybe that's a group that you can appeal to, that at least make some connections with the Edison people who are part of that meeting, who attend that. I, I think there's, you need to keep working on that.
We intend to.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, can we please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember McQueen-Lajon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tempores?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We're moving on to city manager comments and reports.
I have a few today. Can you pull up the map, please? First, we just wanted to note that a few meetings ago, the city council implemented several actions to try to help with some of the speeding and traffic issues. And one of those was adopting the approved, thank you, reduced speed limits in certain areas that we had surveyed, where we found justification to reduce the speed limit. And so, those signs have been going in over the last few days, and they are now installed, the new speed limit signs. We're working on this speed reduction map, which I'm pulling up, that we were going to use to help inform the public about this change. And then, one of the key things is we're working with the police department right now to identify what day they can start enforcement of those new speeds. I know, we saw on Facebook and some different places, comments where people said, you know, putting up new speed limit signs doesn't do anything if we're not enforcing it. And I sort of want to remind people, you also have to flip that, though. You can't enforce the speed limit until you go through the process of changing it and putting those signs up. So we are planning to do both of those things. We're putting up the new signs. We, those are now installed, and now we're going to work with our police department to start enforcing. And then we're going to have the new motorcycle unit to, to help with the enforcement as well. And so just as a reminder to everybody, this map that we'll be putting out in the next day or so shows the areas in blue that have changed from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour, in green, from 45 miles per hour to 40, and that's mostly Patterson and Channel Islands Boulevard. And...
No, that's just one side.
One side. Yep, thank you. And then from 50 miles per hour to 45 miles per hour in some areas, such as Victoria. And then there is a second part of the map, and it's mostly the, from 30 to 25 in the residential areas is what's shown on the others, including Surfside Drive and Market Street. So those signs are up now, and we'll share this information, and, and people will start to see those signs, but also the enforcement starting soon. So, and we'll, we'll share that information as well. So we have that. The other, just quick reminder, it's the holidays coming up, and so we have a lot of holiday events coming up. It's hard to keep track of them. We have the holiday tree lighting, which is, I believe, I misplaced my flyer, but I believe it's November 28th. And tomorrow, we have our Police Explorers Turkey Giveaway, which will be 5:30, starting at the community center. So we invite everybody to participate in those. And then we also have the Senior Holiday Luncheon coming up in a couple of weeks, but I understand tickets just sold out on those, so hopefully everybody got those. And so, lots of holiday events. Again, and we just announced right before the meeting, our Mar Vista Holiday Party, and I am blanking on that date, but we'll, we'll share that information as well. Soon. But, so lots of holiday events, and hopefully we'll see everybody at each of those. So, thanks. Now, thank you, City Manager. Councilmember reports and comments, starting with Councilmember Martha McQueen?
Just a couple. Thank you, Mayor. Of course, participated in my committees, one announcement I'd like to make is that BCTC received a Clean California grant from Caltrans for bus stop improvements for Gulf Coast Transit. It was $500,000, and it will fund designed hardscape improvements, shelters, benches, solar lights, and waste receptacles at selected stops in the area. Haven't heard if our, any of ours are at, are part of that, but we'll hopefully hear something soon. And another thing that I learned at my last meeting is that the Port Huinimi bus route is the longest bus route in the county. Goes from Port Huinimi through Oxnard, and then through Ventura. So that was nice to know. That's it. Thank you.
Want to thank staff for the Veterans Day event. It, I know it was put together kind of like at the last minute, but it went off very well. And I look forward to next year's event. If we can start working on that, would be great. We had a successful enchilada dinner at the VFW this past Saturday. We raised over $500 to support the Ventura County Foster Children Christmas Gifts. And so I was really pleased for everyone that came out. And looking forward to try to make as many holiday appearances as I can. Oh, yeah, we had the, I helped with the Savvy Senior Event, which was at the Ocean View Pavilion, which was really cool. I have never seen more senior citizens dancing than I did there. It was really cool. Want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, coming up this week, in case you didn't know. And I hope we all get to spend good quality time with our families and friends. And same goes to our residents of our wonderful city. Thank you.
Mayor, I've attended all my meetings since our last city council meeting. I attended the Site Authority Board Meeting through Cal State University, Channel Islands. We're responsible for, essentially, asking, acting as the HOA Board for University Glen. So we're having some challenges there that we're working on. I also attended the SCAG Legislative Communication Membership Committee, VRSD. I got to attend this, this time. And thanks again to Councilwoman Martha McQueen-Lajon for standing in for me in previous months. We also had the Mural Committee meeting on Friday, and I will be asking for an agenda item coming up. But I just wanted to let everybody know that the RFP, the Call for Artists, has gone out today. There's a, well, it's going out tomorrow, the 21st. There will be a press release accompanying it. So if any of you know artistic people with artistic talents who might be interested in applying, stay tuned for the information. I'm sure it'll be posted on Facebook and other social media and wherever you get your information. So again, that's the RFP, a Call for Artists, going out tomorrow. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Want to say that staff did do a great job on the Veterans Day celebration. We have a sister city meeting planned for December 5th. I think it's at 6:00 PM. And there might be a restructuring of reach, but we'll, we'll come back with more information in about like two months, because we're not going to meet till, I think, January. But I think that's it for me. Are there any requests for future agenda items? I know, I, I have one, but... Councilmember Hernandez, I know you have one.
Yes, I have one. I would like to ask for an agenda item to discuss the Mural Selection Committee.
I'll second that. Madam Clerk, can we please...
No one in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. All opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.
And then Mayor Pro Tem?
I don't know if it's an agenda item, just an update on the, maybe I already asked for it. I vaguely remember the street sweeping schedule, you know, we asked for that to be like alternative.
Yeah, you've asked for that, and so we will work to get it to you. Yeah.
Speaking of that, are we having street sweeping on Friday?
I believe not. Um, I think we actually were talking about posting something online to inform people that we weren't.
Site net said no.
Okay, yeah. I think we were posting something like Friday, and I don't remember if it got posted or not. So we'll confirm that, and if it's posted, it's posted. If not, we'll get it posted to tell people.
Yeah, I wanted to ask if we could get a crime stat report. We haven't had had one for a while. I think since Salinas left.
We had one in, we had one in in the summer.
In the summer? Okay, well, it's been still a while, so we could get one. Maybe after the first of the year. A crime stat report? Okay.
Uh, is there a second or? Okay.
Guarding the multi-unit non-smoking, um, ban in the house, in the multi-unit housing, um, I think it'd be good for us to at least have a discussion and put it on the agenda.
Favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.
Any other future requests? Okay. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M. The meeting is now adjourned. The time is nine twenty P M. Everyone, please get home safe.